We're in the intro, stand by for countdown. We're in ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, December 7th, 2022. Also, please remember those that died on December 7th, 1941. They helped protect our country as many people have, but we need to hold them in a special place in our heart. I want to welcome everyone that's in the audience today, those that are joining us online, those that are joining us on television. And with that, I'd like to call the meeting to order for Wednesday, December 7th, 2022. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Invocation to be observed by a moment of silence.
Thank you.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present.
Madam Clerk, next item.
County announcements.
Well, good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Nicole Gibbs, Community Relations Specialist for the county. The 2022 Best of Wichita winners were announced this weekend, and I'm excited to share that Calm Care was voted one of Wichita's best mental health services in the city. Our community recognizes and supports the work that they do and the work that they do to serve, the work that they are doing for those that they serve. Congratulations, Calm Care, and we're incredibly proud of you. Next up, I have Lindsey Miller from Red Cross to talk about this year's Battle of the Badges.
Good morning, Ms. Miller, and also welcome to all our first responders that are here with us.
I did bring a few friends with me. These gentlemen are all part of our Battle of the Badges Committee. We are here to announce and invite the community to participate in our 28th Annual Wichita-Sedgwick County Battle of the Badges Community Blood Drive, which will be held beginning next Tuesday, December 13th, through January 1st, which is a Sunday. Our goal is to collect between blood platelet and Power Red donations, just under 1,500 blood products that will go to support those patients that are in need. I'm going to invite these guys to say a few words as well.
Good, welcome. There we go, we got the right graphic.
How about that? That even makes my talking points a lot easier. Okay, my name is Captain Chris Fleming with the Wichita Fire Department, and we just want to really come out and let everybody know that the need for blood products doesn't go down in the holiday season, it actually goes up. We have a lot of holiday parties and a lot of celebrations and schools are out, and so the blood donations actually tend to dip down at that time, and the need for blood never does. And so we want to really give a personal invitation to everyone to come out, donate the gift of life this holiday season, and while you're there, you might as well just vote for the fire department. And so we'll put a little thing up here just to make sure that everybody remembers who to vote for. I have little presents for everybody just to make sure that you guys listen. I know you don't want one, but I'll let you have one.
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
Well, he's trying to influence you here. I'm Captain Tracy Spire, I'm with the Sheriff's Office. I'd just like to reiterate what Chris said, that this is a time of need and blood donations are down, and would like to encourage everyone to get out and donate blood when only three of 100 people donate. Clearly, the need is there, but the product is not, so I would encourage everybody to get out and donate, it's a great cause, and I don't have any tokens, but I would encourage you to vote for law. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain.
I'm Joe Kennedy, I'm a lieutenant with Wichita Police Department, so we won't want to talk too much up here, but this is a time of need, and this is when we can help out there, gets us out to the public. There's several drives going on throughout Wichita, you can go online and look it up and get signed up for a time to donate. And of course, fire always has little toys, they got the time to do this. We want you to vote for the true first responders, which is law enforcement, because EMS and fire are really second responders, because we always show up first to help them out. So, but if you would, yeah, but if you would vote for law enforcement, we would appreciate being the winners this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant. And he stole your duck, too.
Good morning, Commissioner. Division Chief Robert Timmons of Sedgwick County Fire. All kidding aside, it is an important time of the year, accidents, injuries, the need for blood is there, and the donations do dip down. A fun little statistical anomaly is when people are asked, why don't you donate blood? The number one answer is, well, nobody asks. So we're asking. And remember, if you take nothing else from this meeting, remember, vote fire.
Well, very good, thank you. We did joke around with that a little bit, but it is a serious matter, so please get the word out to please help donate and vote for your favorite first responder. Thank you.
No, I don't have a preference. Okay, now the update you have all been waiting for. I'm going to introduce Director of Strategic Communications, Jenica King, here from the zoo, to talk about their sweet little baby chimp.
Welcome. I saw this presentation at the Zoo Board meeting here about a week ago, and it's fantastic, and so I invited him over today to make sure that the public knows exactly what's going on over at the zoo, especially in one special case. So thank you very much, all the folks from the zoo that are here today, but special thanks to everybody in the zoo that takes care of 3,000 animals and does a great job.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for the invitation to be here, I'm so excited to share this news that it feels like the whole world is behind us and celebrating. So if you haven't seen the video, the video that put Sedgwick County Zoo in six continents, So this is Mahali, and she is mama chimpanzee, whoops, I'm going to close that, okay, there we go. Mahali is a mama chimpanzee who needed an emergency C-section while she was giving birth to baby Kuchesa. So our keepers and our medical staff intervened, we had two human OB-GYNs come in and perform the C-section. Baby Kuchesa had some breathing issues at birth, he had trouble oxygenating well, so he needed to stay in the hospital for a couple of days. So just under 48 hours after birth, they were able to be reunited, and that is the video that you saw there. So our keepers captured that sweet moment, and we posted it later that day, and here we are with 70 million viral views, and that's just on our social media pages. We have gained 100,000 new followers on Facebook, Instagram, TikTok, all of our social media channels. What's most exciting for me in the communication world is that that has led to 3.6 million engagements. So those are connections that we may not have already had with people all across the world. We've got followers now on six continents. We're able to have conversations with people who didn't previously understand why zoos are here, which is not just to put animals in front of people and be there for entertainment. Our goal is conservation, our goal is saving wildlife. The animals that we care for at our zoo serve as ambassadors for their species, and so this is what we're able to do, we're connecting now with 70 million people and a 3.1 billion total news reach. So worldwide news media, CNN, BBC, and national news, ABC, CBS, NBC, Fox, all of the big news channels have shared this and are continuing to follow the story. So we're really, really excited that this happened, but now we're really excited about what's next and what can we do with it, and what connections can we continue to make, and people can we continue to educate. So I have a really special guest with me now that I'm excited to introduce to you. This is Zoological Manager Danielle Decker, she leads the team in charge of caring for our chimpanzees specifically, she was the videographer of the video, and if you listen to that with sound, you can hear just how emotional and happy Danielle is. And so these keepers are the ones with them every day, they're the ones caring for them. I wanted to give her an opportunity to come up, maybe answer questions, or talk to you a little bit about what's next. So this is Danielle Decker.
Welcome, thank you for coming today.
Good morning. Yes, this has been a very interesting time in my career, we are so happy with the outcome. We still have a little bit to go, we are slowly introducing Mahali and Kuchesa to the rest of the chimpanzee group, it's going well. Mahali's a little slower in her introductions, so you know, all the other chimpanzees are being very respectful of our time. So we are working tirelessly to get them back together, but Kuchesa is thriving and doing very well. If you have any questions for me?
Any questions from the commission? I don't see any right now, but again, this is just one of our keepers that take care of the animals over there. And this is a 24-hour day job, seven days a week, 365 days a year, but they don't have Christmas off, New Year's, all of the different things that we look at, because they are caring for 3,000 animals each and every day, and the care of each of these keepers is amazing. When I go over, I have a unique ability to be able to go over behind the scenes a lot of times, but just to see how that they train those animals and care for them, I'd never thought of like a gorilla backing up to a cage to get a shot, but they train them to do these kind of things. And that's a very unique talent that each one of these people that work with the animals each and every day have in order to be able to care for those animals, and they do, and when I say care, they do care. I want to make sure that everybody understands that. So this video was amazing, last week when they talked to us, the potential news reach was in the $2 billion range, so it's jumped up a billion since they briefed us a week ago, so it continues to grow. So again, thanks to everybody, I know we've only got four of you over here from the zoo staff, but let them know, everybody, how much we appreciate what they do. The number one tourist attraction in the state of Kansas is the Sedgwick County Zoo, and that is because of what, not only the staff, but also we have probably the best board I've ever served on, that makes sure that things are growing over there. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. I don't have a question, but I just wanted to tell you how much I appreciated that you recorded that and put that up. I don't know if it's, I'm a little extra hormonal right now, but the first time I saw that, I was like, oh my gosh, you know, because thinking about this animal who didn't even know where her baby was, and then to see that reaction was just incredible. So thank you so much for sharing that, not just with our community, but with the world, I really appreciate both of you for being here, thank you.
Yeah, that's the general, that mother's love is unconditional throughout animals and such, so it's great that we could show that, especially for chimpanzees, they kind of have a different reputation within the great ape world. So they are very caring, they love their family group, they love babies, and I'm excited to see where this group dynamic goes and share that with the community as they continue to grow their family.
I have a question. Do you still have a relationship with Jane Goodall, does the zoo have a relationship with her? I know she came years ago and set up some kind of observation program, people could participate in.
Yes, Jane Goodall's been here, you know, she's on a bigger platform, you know, supporting chimpanzees and talking various communities, so we don't see her as much as we used to, she's got a little different job nowadays, but we definitely support Jane Goodall.
Well, I don't see any other questions. Again, thank you all very much for bringing this over, I had the opportunity to see this and be able to meet with staff, and I just wanted the rest of the community to have the same opportunity, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, that is all I have, and I will stand for any questions.
Thank you very much, Nicole, I appreciate it, and we'll continue on with the meeting then. Thanks for everyone for being here. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Public agenda.
Thank you. Commissioners, we had four or five that came in by email last night, so I move that we receive and file those. We have a motion and a secondary discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call you, roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And also, we have six people signed up to speak today during public agenda, I will call each of you up one at a time. The first individual is Andrew Crane, and you will have five minutes, please state your name for the record. Morning, Andrew.
Good morning. Let me get my guide dog sat down here. Good morning, I'm Andrew Crane with Guiding Paws ICT, 700 North Market in downtown Wichita. I am here to talk to the commission about the IRA access for the blind community and the disabled community here in Wichita. We had a meeting with the IRA folks, with the Workforce Center, and we are in motion to get all facilities of the Workforce Center IRA access for the blind community. This is a good push for IRA access for the whole city of Wichita, including Sedgwick County, and to make it more easier for blind individuals to connect with the city and the county. And I am here today to ask the commission to help get this going for the state of Kansas and Sedgwick County.
Well, thank you, Andrew, the public may not know the definition of IRA, so please explain what that is.
It is a technology, IRA is a specific technology, an app on the blind individual's phone that can connect with a live agent, and that live agent is there to assist the blind individual in any task, job, in anything, home, getting from point A to point B, traveling on a bus, and that. So IRA does a lot technology-wise and makes it a lot easier for blind individuals to get around.
Well, thank you, Andrew. Again, I have seen it demonstrated, but I didn't know if the rest of the public knew what it was about, so thank you very much for bringing that to us, and we will be happy to follow that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next individual is Bill Anderson, please approach the podium, state your name for the record, you will have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Bill Anderson, I live in Commissioner Cruz's district. I didn't prepare anything, I just want to, I'm just here to tell Lacy Cruz just how deeply grateful I am for your service. For the first time, I lived here over half a century, and for the first time, I had somebody that I really trusted on that commission, I had somebody who I felt had the right values, who cared about people, who cared about people who don't get represented. This is from my heart, Lacy, I'm very sorry I got screwed like the way you did, but thank you very much, and you gave me hope, you've given me hope, thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
Well, I wasn't expecting to cry today, but thank you for that, Bill, I really appreciate your support, it means a lot that you came in here and took the time to park, first of all, right? Walk up here and say those kind words to me, I truly appreciate it. Sometimes we get lost in the negative side of things, but there truly is victory and defeat, and I appreciate you being here, thank you, thank you for those words.
Thank you. Next speaker is Andrew Hartz. Is Andrew Hartz here? Please state your name for the record, you will have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Andrew Hartz, I am the State Director with Community Solutions Multi-Systemic Program. I apologize, when I signed in, I thought it was just the signing, because I'm here to answer any questions we might have after Dr. Craig presents her stuff to the board.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Next speaker is Ken Walker, is that correct?
Same.
Yeah, same thing, very good, no problem. Next speaker is Janice Bradley. Please state your name for the record, you'll have five minutes.
My name is Janice Bradley. So I was unfortunately out of town on the July 6th, 2022 meeting, Sedgwick County Commission meeting, but I was recently able to view the meeting video, and I have comments about it and the value-them-both amendment. So in looking at this video, I saw a very poorly staged performance by Mr. Howell, the two Kansas reps, Penn and Humphreys, and to a lesser extent, Mr. Dennis. It seemed the purpose was to attack Commissioner Cruz for her communication, attempting to clarify and inform about a very confusing amendment on the ballot in the primary election on August 2nd. In the video I saw, you created a hostile environment for Ms. Cruz. But righteously, the value-them-both amendment did not pass, and the forced birthers lost. Men and women, young and old, Republicans, Democrats, Libertarians, and unaffiliateds came out in record numbers to defend personal liberty, including women's rights to make health decisions with their doctors. People are not okay with the politicians making medical decisions for them, and they showed it. Congratulations to all the no voters in Kansas, you showed the nation how to stand up for our rights. The forced birthers tried every trick in the book to win, they wrote a confusing text, they placed the ballot on the primary election when most Democrats and unaffiliateds do not vote, and they misinformed or lied about the existing abortion regulations in Kansas. Like Mr. Penn, when he lied about abortion up to the moment of and after birth, that does not happen. Abortion is and has been highly regulated in Kansas, nothing has changed. been highly regulated in Kansas. Nothing has changed since the court ruling in 2019 to reduce safety on abortion or the clinics where it takes place. The other restrictions or regulations include: One, abortions are prohibited after 22 weeks, except in cases of life or health endangerment. Two, abortions in Kansas must be performed by a licensed physician. Three, late-term abortions and abortions based on gender selection are prohibited. Three. Four, public funding for abortion is available only in cases of life endangerment, rape, or incest. There was a lot of confusion on this issue.
Five.
Five. Patients are required to undergo an ultrasound before an abortion. Six, there is a 24-hour waiting period after the state-directed counseling prior to receiving an abortion. Seven, parental consent is required for minors to receive an abortion. And eight, private insurance coverage of abortions is limited to cases of life endangerment unless enrollees purchase additional coverage for specific abortions. The Kansas Legislature is like the Sedgwick County Commission, ruled by right-wing Republicans, forced birthers, who we all know would have worked to create an abortion ban if their value them both amendment had passed. Thanks to Ms. Cruz and so many other activists, the plans were exposed for what they were, an attack on personal liberty and choice, that ignited a prairie fire of protest and organizing and put Kansas on the map. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any comments. Next speaker is Lila Arne. Is that correct?
I signed in an error, so I'm on another matter.
Very good. So you want to speak later?
Yes. Well, I'm out here on another matter on the agenda.
Okay. Very good. All right. That's all the public comments that we have today. I move that we receive and file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second in any discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of November 2, 2022.
Commissioners, everyone's had an opportunity to review the minutes from November 2 and November 16. I move to approve items Alpha and Bravo. We have a motion and a second in any discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Regular meeting minutes of November 16, 2022.
Oh, we did A and B together.
Oh, excuse me. Proclamations. Item C, proclamation declaring Make ICT Founder's Day.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioners. I have a proclamation that I'd like to read at this time. Whereas in 2012, a group of friends met to discuss how to foster a community of makers locally. They endeavored to create a maker space where people from every background could share tools, knowledge, skills, and ideas. They quickly began building a community by holding social events and workshops to find other like-minded individuals calling themselves Make ICT and declaring a mission to innovate, learn, and build community at the intersection of art, technology, science, and culture. And whereas in 2012, they began their maker space by subleasing an area from the locally-owned art supply store, Bluebird Art House at 924 West Douglas. There, they developed a blueprint for what their future would bring. When the art supply store closed, a $16,000 grant from the Wichita Community Foundation allowed the makers to stay in their space, leasing directly from the owners, and even expanding their footprint. And whereas in April 2015, with 100 members and a $100,000 grant from the Knight Foundation through the Wichita Community Foundation, Make ICT purchased new equipment, tools, to be shared among their growing community in their newly rented 8,700-square-foot space at 1500 East Douglas. And whereas in September 29, in September 2019, with a strong community of over 400 active members, Make ICT purchased the former Booth Elementary School with three acres and 22,000-square-foot building with 14 classrooms at 5920 East Mount Vernon Street. And whereas from April 2020 to December 2021, under the restrictions of COVID, they built out that space. The building includes two classrooms, a large meeting space, visual arts, fabrications lab, ceramics, jewelry-making, screen printing, lounge electronics lab, darkroom, gallery, metal shop, textile studio, wood shop, letterpress, scrapbooking, and garden space. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Chairman David T. Dennis, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim December 3, 2022, as Make ICT Founder's Day, and encourage all citizens to extend sincere congratulations and gratitude to Make ICT for enriching the lives of Sedgwick County citizens by providing a space for makers to share, learn, and grow from the past 10 years. Commissioners, you've all heard the proclamation. Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second in any discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And this is being accepted by Melissa Long and Ladena Dockery from Make ICT. Welcome.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, well, we'd like to invite people to come out and visit our maker space. It's a lot of fun. We have open house on 2nd and 4th Mondays, so the next one is December 12.
Yes. Thank you for presenting us with this proclamation. We truly appreciate it.
Very good. Well, hopefully you grow and prosper another 10 years at least.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments. Item D, accept the resignation of Fred Paner from the Sedgwick County 5th District Citizens Advisory Board.
Mr. Papoun.
Chairman Mike Papoun, County Counselor, could please the board. I think we can handle items D, E, and F together. All three involve resignations from Citizens Advisory Boards. Item D is resignation of Fred Paner from Commissioner Howell's Citizens Advisory Board. Item E is the resignation of Thomas Montiel from Commissioner Sarah Lopez's Advisory Board, District 2. And item F is also Commissioner Sarah Lopez's appointment, who is resigning Guadalupe Montez. All three appointments, I mean, please accept the resignation of all three of the resignations.
Thank you. And we'll start with Commissioner Lopez, and I'll give Commissioner Howell a chance to speak. So Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Item F is actually an appointment, not a resignation, so I don't know if you just want to do.
Which one is?
Oh, I'm sorry. Item F, we'll handle item F and the next item.
So we'll do Delta and Echo.
Okay.
So please accept the resignation of Fred Paner and Thomas Montiel.
Don't kick him off before he's got a chance to start, please. Okay. No, I appreciate, we had a little miscommunication with Thomas, and so there was, he just wasn't able to serve, so that's why he is already on this list here. But I appreciate, I guess, him. I don't know. I don't know how to say that, because he wasn't here, but he had some issues that wasn't able to do it.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell, do you have any comments?
I sure do. Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to thank Mr. Fred Paner for his service to the Citizens Advisory Board, District 5. He's been there since the beginning, and he's been a very faithful member. Actually, he volunteered the use of his bread-of-life building for our meetings for about a year of that time, and just a very, very faithful, giving person. He has other things he's focusing on now, so he's going to step away from this board, but he's not doing less in life, he's doing more, but he just needs more time to do those other things. And so I just want to say thank you to Fred. His service is duly noted. He's an excellent cab board member. And now, just for the record, Mr. Chairman and audience, I have three openings on my cab board, so I'm seeking members to step up. But I do want to say thank you, sincere thanks, to Mr. Fred Paner. Thank you, Chairman. I make a motion that we would adopt the, accept the resignations on items D and E for Fred Paner and Thomas Montiel.
We have a motion and a second in any discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Okay. Madam Clerk, item foxtrot.
Item F, resolution to appoint Guadalupe Montez to the Sedgwick County 2nd District Citizens Advisory Board.
Mr. Papoun.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I decided to put my glasses on, so. Item F is the resolution to appoint Guadalupe Montez to Commissioner Lopez's Citizens Advisory Board. Resolution's in proper form, and ask you to approve the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Papoun. And in his defense, he's still cheering for K-State over the weekend, so he's got that on his mind yet. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. I have not had the opportunity to personally meet Lupe yet, but I'm very excited to have him on the board. He's going to bring another voice from Clearwater to our advisory board, which is always needed. So I very much appreciate him and look forward to working with him soon. So I will move that we adopt this resolution.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item G, resolution appointing Natalie Phan to the Sedgwick County 1st District Citizens Advisory Board Youth Position.
Mr. Papoun.
Mr. Chairman, Mike Papoun, County Counselor. If you remember, during our last meeting, this board adopted a resolution changing Commissioner Meitzner's Citizens Advisory Board to include a student member to the board. This resolution is appointing Natalie Phan to that board. The resolution's in proper form, and ask you to approve the resolution.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm honored to nominate Natalie Phan to the Citizens Advisory Board. Chairman Dennis and I, and maybe, were you there at that? We both attended a recent event with the, you don't have to say the name of the organization, but Natalie was a very impressive presenter at that meeting, and the chairman and I got to visit with her, and it was just somehow an inspiration for me to, I think, asked her if she wanted to be a part of Citizens Advisory Board and be involved. And she's a high school student at Cape and Mount Carmel, and she does a nice job there, as well, I understand, there. So honored to add her to our Citizens Advisory Board. And so with that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner. And I also had an opportunity to meet with her that evening, and you made a very wise choice, so I will be happy to second that. I don't see any other discussion. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And here to square them in is Kelly Arnold, our county clerk. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the state of Kansas, and faithfully discharge duties of the Office of Sedgwick County 1st District Citizens Advisory Board to help me guide.
I do.
Congratulations.
Well, Natalie, we're going to put you on the spot, because we're going to give you an opportunity to speak.
I believe we all met at the BSC meeting, so, just to refresh your memory, but I would love to extend my gratitude toward all of you, especially Mr. Meitzner, for this opportunity, and I am just so excited. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Natalie.
New business. Item H, Department of Corrections Juvenile Services Program Evaluation.
Well, good morning, Dr. Craig Moreland, and welcome back. We get to see you each year, and in the past years during COVID, while some of your analysis was causing us some concerns about some of the programs, I look forward to hearing what we're doing now.
Thank you. I'm Dr. Dolores Craig Moreland. I'm from Wichita State University's School of Criminal Justice, and I have the pleasure of giving you some information about the programs that are available for juveniles in Sedgwick County. Uh-oh. There we go. I'm not always up to technology where I should be, so forgive me if I go back and forth with this PowerPoint. I have my own tools in the classroom, and I'm a victim of my ability to do those well and not necessarily others. So the programs that I'm going to talk to you about are funded through three different sources. The Sedgwick County Crime Prevention Fund provided $208,125 for 416 successes. The Kansas Department of Corrections Juvenile Services used funds in the amount of $76,641 for 204 hearings. Those are hearings that are related to detention. They're also following legal services on that. The Kansas Department of Corrections Juvenile Services Evidence-Based Funds provided $610,485 for some system improvements, as well as 22 successes in two programs that were funded through that. Before I go into the programs, I'd just like to summarize the needs that we know juveniles have. We look each spring at the risk factors that are evident among the juveniles that come to juvenile intake and assessment or receive services provided through juvenile field services. And between those two things, we get a lot of information about what sorts of problems create delinquency, and the Team Justice Group reviews those. They have established from that data that there are three domains of particular concern. The two, generally the antisocial personality just shows up in an extremely rare case, and it's very difficult to deal with, so we don't field programs for that. But we do have programs that deal with antisocial cognition. That's the kind of thinking that results in delinquent behavior. And antisocial associates, that's the problem of having delinquent friends who tend to make that behavior more likely. The second tier that Team Justice has identified includes family problems, issues at school, a lack of healthy pro-social leisure and recreation opportunities, as well as substance abuse. Those are part of the domain setup that is in the Risk Needs Responsivity model that helps us understand delinquency and how to predict delinquency. So we look at that information. Team Justice reviews it to assist in identifying programs, and they guide us. The programs that we have here in Sedgwick County include one secondary prevention program that is for individuals who have a risk of delinquency but have not yet become delinquent. That's the Mental Health Association does a PAS program. It's designed to help children learn how to deal with conflicting situations in pro-social ways. It's always given to elementary students who are not yet delinquent. The tertiary prevention programs in this year's review include Untamed Athletes, which is addressing the question of leisure and recreation, and using that carrot, if you want to call it that, to provide mentoring, tutoring, and family support, as well as multi-systemic therapy. And Cbar is the Center for Behavioral and Academic Research. That's the alternative school. So those are the programs. The secondary programs, as I said, the Mental Health Association PAS program served 419 elementary students with a 96% success rate. That's a very good success rate. If you look at that number and compare this year's result with last year's result, they have more than tripled the number of people that they're able to serve. I gave a few apologies last year for our poor numbers. I was appreciative of the fact that you understood that we were coming off the pandemic, and some of the programs had difficulties meeting their numbers. And so this is the fruit that that tree is bearing for your patients with. And so this is the fruit that that tree is bearing for your patience with that. They have every expectation that they will again move to the 600 to 700 participant level as they're able to work out opportunities in the appropriate schools. I see this program as one that we should continue to support and be very happy with their efforts to expand that. Gee, I just said some of this stuff. Well, I think the main thing is that they were offered in three schools, in USD 259, one Hayesville School, plus a non-school location. With the pandemic, I started urging them to consider ways to deliver the service that I regard as important without necessarily being tied to a school setting. So they are working on that, and I think that's a positive. But they have been successful in identifying schools where there's a significant number of at-risk kids, and they're using their program in those schools to help those kids. The tertiary programs, a total of three programs, Untamed Athletes, Multi-Systemic Therapy, and Cbar, served kids that are already known to the juvenile justice system. The Untamed Athletes Program and the Multi-Systemic Therapy Program delivered by Community Solutions have, this is their first year of funding. They were funded through the state's evidence-based funding, and they had what I would consider to be typical first-year issues with establishing reference spaces, establishing a good staff, and making it all start to work. I'll go through those in more detail. Untamed Athletes received $197,000 for mentoring through their sports coaching. They do football, basketball, soccer. They have engaged a staff that will allow them to work with both males and females, but thus far, their services have been accessed by males. So as I said, it's a first, first year of the program funding. I expect to see better total numbers served, where they're able to achieve their target, as well as higher levels of success. Multi-Systemic Therapy, the Community Solutions, Inc. is offering this. This was their first year. They serve 14 of a targeted 20 to 30 youth. It's an evidence-based program. There's a large body of research that says that people who receive this have a greatly reduced likelihood of continued delinquent behavior. The age of youth served in this program here locally was, generally, half of them were 16 to 18 years of age. Ideally, we'll like to see that come down to earlier interventions, but again, with a first-year program, it's not likely we're going to hit exactly where we want to be. Their success rate was 50%, and I think, again, establishing referrals of the correct individuals, engagement of those individuals, and making it work appropriately, that will happen. I, I believe that, well, they are also being funded through two sources this year. This is for state fiscal year 2022. And in this year, they are serving both an at-risk population as well as a currently delinquent population. And the numbers are much better, and I think their results are also going to show that a lot of these issues are related to startup challenges, and I think that's something you just have to expect. Center for Behavior, and that should be academic research. This is their seventh year. It's not an evidence-based program. They do use evidence-based practices. I have worked with them for the past five years in directing their efforts into evidence-based practice. They received $145,685. They served 26 students. Their target was 30. 15 were successful. Their behavior change is not where it needs to be. It should get there if they continue to focus on the evidence-based practices. When we look at the lasting impact of this program, it's a, it's an alternative school for kids who have long-term suspension or expulsion. Without this, those kids have fewer alternatives for productive use of their time, so it's an important piece of our effort. But they do need to improve the lasting impact. The four of the students had new JAC intakes while in, in the program, and that's an indication that there's still some work to be done on behavioral issues. And they are working with 13 to 15-year-olds, so they're creating an opportunity for an age group we'd like to see served. The evidence-based funding, this is the second year we've received the opportunity to use this money. It's, Chase can give me the exact, exact number, but it's $765,000 a year, roughly. Is that the ballpark? Yeah. We didn't use all of it. We used $610,000 of it. Some of the reasons some of it was not used was simply a question of staff availability. Some people weren't able to hire. Other kinds of things happened. $310,000 supported two of those programs. The two were Untamed Athletes and the Community Solutions MST program. In addition, for a, this is the second year that the money has been used to follow what happens to kids that are involved with both the juvenile justice system and the child welfare system. We have a certain number of those kids, and whenever one of them comes into JAC, it kicks off a tracking that follows for 90 days to see if they are getting the services that are needed to improve their outcomes. These crossover youth have been the subject of some national research that shows that you have to do something extra for these kids because they have dual jeopardy, and unless you do something extra, they're not going to fare well. 51 youth received a 12-hour training after a first intake at JAC. That took a little over $100,000. Those 51 youth were seen the first time at JAC. They were low-risk, but they still were seen at JAC. So there was a, an attempt there to provide an intervention that wasn't kicked off by their risk level necessarily. It was kicked off by the fact that they made some choice that resulted in their being at JAC. So that service, I'm not sure you can even call that a secondary prevention. We're hoping it's a prevention. We're following those youth to see what happens. 88 attorneys and judges received legal training related to juvenile justice, and that was, Team Justice held a community summit in January of 2021, and one of the things that the community surfaced as a clear need, in their view, was additional legal training so that the attorneys and any judges, especially those who might serve on a short-term basis, have a clear, solid understanding of the issues and the opportunities in, in juvenile court. There was also a small expenditure for J-CAB members, and the Evening Reporting Center, which is a part of your Sedgwick County programming, received an enhancement grant out of this of $124,000-plus that funded a really good educational program that's embedded in that so that, especially those who have dropped out of school or for whatever reason don't have access, have embedded within the Evening Reporting System a good educational program. So one of the issues that challenges juvenile justice throughout the United States is racial and ethnic disparity, and we continue to follow that. We've had, over the years, we've had four or five initiatives that I'm personally aware of. I'm not happy to say that these programs served more than, more than half their populations were minority. I'm happy that minority youth are getting those opportunities. I'm not happy that we have that many minority youth that are in need of these services. So it's kind of a double-edged sword. Of the 816 closures related to all seven programs, the success rate for all minority youth was 92%, while that for Caucasian youth was 86%. Those, for all intents and purposes, considering that the people who participate in these programs are somewhat self-selected, those two rates can be considered to be essentially equal. The numbers are relatively small. 816 isn't a huge population. And as I say, the people that are in those programs are there for particular reasons, so it doesn't necessarily cause any concern that one is very much different, although, as I said, they're, they're pretty much the same. The rate of success for the African-American youth was identical to that of Caucasians, and the rate for Hispanic youth was 93%. I think you need to give the programs credit for that. It means that they're getting culturally competent staff that are, some of the programs have bilingual staff, but those, those numbers are an indication that we're going in a good direction on these issues. It doesn't mean we've gotten to any kind of a finish line, but it means that the things that we're doing, especially working on cultural awareness, those things are bearing fruit. Gender is another consideration that the national research literature tells us is Females get involved in delinquency for different reasons than males, and in our programs, the females are more successful than the males are. That is also true across the nation if the programming for females is specific to females. If you leave the females together with the males in the work that you do, in groups and things like that, they traditionally don't do as well. But if they're separated, they get down to the business they need to get to, and that seems to benefit them. So, so program impact, hopefully you like these numbers a little better than last year. Last year, you may recall, we had 519 total served, and that included even counting from system improvements and things like that. This year, we have 1,321. I believe this is coming into line with reasonable expectations post-pandemic. I think it's also a function, even this year could have been better. We had some providers from the prior year, from fiscal year '21, who dropped out. I don't think we beat up on them. I think they just recognized that if they couldn't get the numbers, that they needed to fall back until they either had regrouped on staffing or referrals. So, and somewhere I have a preview of next year, which obviously I can't tell you the numbers, but I can tell you that the money in SFY '23 will be the same from the state's Prevention Fund and from the evidence base, and there will be 529,000-plus from the Sedgwick County Crime Prevention Fund to fund five programs instead of two. So I think we have reason to believe that expansions are happening in a thoughtful way and that it's going to benefit us. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try and answer them.
Certainly. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. I have, I just have a couple of questions. You talked about the success rates for females doing better when they're separated. Why is that? Can you expand on that?
The research that's out there says that, again, that females get involved in delinquency, acting out forms of delinquency in particular, because of emotional distress, and it's usually emotional distress that's related to family problems. And, and males get involved for individual achievement needs, ego trip kind of things. I mean, it's not all that simple. There's, there can be family distress there, too. But the females are not going to change and move away from that acting out behavior unless the underlying condition is addressed. And it's only likely that that will be a topic that will receive full treatment and focus if there are only people who have those issues in the group. And that typically means working on the consequences of delinquency with males and working on the causes with females.
Great. Thank you for that explanation. And then to the folks of Community Solutions, are you guys having trouble with the bridge being out? Are people accessing your location okay?
Yeah, we're.
You want to come to the podium, please?
You'll have to come to the podium so that they can be recorded.
Yeah, the, the bridge isn't really affecting us as much because we are an in-home service, so our therapists travel out to their homes and meet them in the community.
Great. I just wanted to make sure that was not an issue. I know that there's been quite a discussion around that bridge being out, so, great. Good to hear that. Thank you.
While you're at the podium, did you have anything else that you wanted to add to Dr. Craig Moreland's discussion?
I'm just going to be available if you had any further questions.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Moreland, thank you for the presentation. I always like hearing about these programs. I think they're very important for our community. I do have a couple of questions for you. Are you, do you, do you know what the state, I don't know if it's called the Prevention Fund necessarily, but there's a state fund that has a savings fund, savings dollars as a consequence of Senate Bill 367, and that, that balance has continued to increase, and it's designed to be used for community-based programming. Are you aware of that fund? Can you talk about that a little bit?
Yes, that fund is, what's the word I'm looking for? It's a trust fund that has resulted from those savings. It has grown. It is the source of the evidence-based funding from which we receive $765,000 so far. We're in our third year of that. That fund is, it has done a little bit of an up and down, and part of it was that there were other uses found for some of that money, even though it was supposed to be only eligible to go into the trust fund. So there was a little bit of up and down, but it's back on a path at this point. It's my understanding, most recent information I have, is that it still contains substantial numbers of millions of dollars. So far, the legislature has not approved any extensive use of that money, as far as I know.
So just to be, why, why ask the question? Because last year, I testified in favor of House Bill 2200 in the House Juvenile Justice Committee, and the, the short title of this is, it says, "Allowing evidence-based program account money to be used on certain children, requiring the Department of Corrections to build data systems, and allowing for overall case-length limit extensions for several juvenile offenders." That's the short title. There's a longer title, which I won't read, but that, it did have a very, I thought, a very favorable hearing, and I believe that the chairman of that committee intends to, to take another look at this bill this year. I believe it's going to, it will probably more likely advance farther than it did last year. I hope to see this passed. But one of the things this is going to do is it's going to compel the legislature to, to use those funds for juvenile justice youth across our state that need that, need that support. Have you been aware of that House Bill 2200, and are, were you aware of that last year? And I don't know if you have awareness of that?
Limited awareness. I, I think that anything that encourages the delivery of that money to the communities, for the communities to make the choices about what to do, and then to follow the impact of that, I think, is a strongly needed thing. I also think personally, this is not a professional opinion, this is a personal one, that if they would allow communities such as Sedgwick County that already has some different sources of money employed, if they would allow us greater latitude in the use of that money so that someone- so that someone who's a threshold person, say they're having a lot of problems at school or something, that we could field programs for them. But we can't under the current rules because they have to already be involved.
Yeah. So a couple of other frustrations I have. Let me just say this. It's my intent, I hope that's the commission's intent, to see a bill identical to House Bill 2200, as it was amended by the House Committee last year, to be reintroduced into the legislature this year, and I hope to see that move forward. I would love to have you get very familiar with that, and I would love to covet your support for that bill to help us move that forward. A couple of things I would point out. Again, the focus of this is primarily criminogenic youth. One of the challenges of our state is they don't really have, they don't have placement options for some youth. They stay in the community, and they receive these programs, many of them do. If they've committed a person crime, they might end up in a juvenile detention facility and potentially end up being adjudicated or convicted and end up in a juvenile corrections facility. But most of the youth that are involved in criminogenic type of activities, for the most part, they're not charged and they're not prosecuted, they're not adjudicated, they're simply, usually, it's one of these, one of two things will happen. The consequence is the case is generally closed by the courts, fairly short timeframe. The youth are given an option of a 30-day detention or some type of enrollment in one of these programs. The vast majority of the kids decline the programming. So the majority of these kids that are involved in criminogenic activities end up a 30-day detention, and then the case is closed. And then when they come back to court following after that, the court has no information to say that this is a repeat offender, so to speak. And it's a frustration, I think, of our courts. It's a frustration of our district attorney and his staff. It's a frustration of law enforcement. One thing we're not tracking in any of this discussion today is, you know, we talked about the youth are enrolled in these programs, they are very successful, but they've got to be enrolled in these programs. And many of the kids that are eligible for these programs do, in fact, decline participation in these programs. And so there's, one thing that House Bill 2200 does is it compels them more effectively to be enrolled in one of these programs. That's an important part. It also opens up the case length limits. There's graduated sanctions for things that might happen with that youth. There's a lot of things in that bill that I think are important to getting a handle on criminogenic youth of Sedgwick County and across the state of Kansas. And I think that we need to understand that without some change, we are going to continue to see escalation of certain types of crimes across our community, and it's not really being tracked. You can't track it with charges or convictions because these children cannot be charged, cannot be prosecuted. They're simply just given 30 days, and then they close the case, and that's what happens until they turn 18. I've just said a lot. I would just say this, that you can please confirm, I would just appreciate a conversation just very briefly, but please confirm that these youth must choose to participate in these programs. They do have the option of declining participation. Is that true?
That is definitely true, especially for the ones that you were talking about, which are the ones that have just showed up through GIAC. A typical example that shows how frustrating all this can be to the professionals is, we fielded a program for $67,000 that was supposed to work with kids who came into GIAC on a firearms-related charge. And those are the very ones that you're talking about. They get held because we have a screening tool that puts them at least overnight into detention. When they come out of detention, they know that it's very unlikely that anything further will follow, so that is the point at which we offer them programming that would address the very reasons that they got involved with the firearm. And they don't take it because they think the best thing they can be is invisible.
Right. Well, I am, I'm quite frustrated. I would just say also, if we don't do something like pass a bill, some House Bill 2200, it's very likely that the state will sweep those funds. So we're saving money based on what we had back in 2016. We're saving money by not dealing with these criminogenic youth the way we used to. And I think 367, I'll just say, for the record, I think is 80, 85% very positive. It's a very good bill. But there's some opportunities to make it better, and that's why I hope the legislature this year will begin to address this issue. For some of these youth, we're failing them, and there is no proper placement for these kids in our community. There is no program that they are compelled to participate in. These are kids that are being dropped, and when they turn 18, they end up in our penitentiaries because they, if they continue the very same behaviors they did when they were youth, they will be given a very long sentence potentially. And don't forget, there's victims along the way. There's property, there's property losses, there's injuries, there are all kinds of things that may happen to the community as a consequence of not dealing with this issue. And finally, I'll just say this, we are using our foster care system as a solution to a lack of placement opportunities for these criminogenic youth. Used to be that CINC kids, children in need of care, simply don't have parents, they were put into foster care, and these are kids that, through no fault of their own, end up in a system that takes care of them because they need some parenting to be part of their life. These children that are doing criminal activities, because we don't have placement options, they end up in the foster care system, and they are rubbing elbows and interfacing with our CINC kids, and that's not a good situation. And second of all, these very negative placements in foster care is wreaking havoc. Many foster parents are pulling out of the system entirely, and we're seeing a lack of foster care opportunities for our foster kids that are CINC kids because of the intermingling of these criminogenic and CINC kids together. So we have got a lot of work to do. I say all that because I want the community to know, this is an enormous situation for Sedgwick County and really for the state of Kansas, and I think for the Board of County Commissioners. We need to be aware of what's going on and see legislation move forward. Appreciate, Dr. Mullen, your perspective, your professionalism, your qualified expert opinion on these things. I think it's extremely important to have someone like you here testifying on these things. And so I appreciate your time today, and Mr. Chairman, that's all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, Dr. Craig Mullen, I don't see any other questions today, but it is a better report than you had last year. I appreciate that. Hopefully, we can continue to improve and reach out then. Some of the things that Commissioner Howell mentioned may help in the future also. So again, thanks for the update this year, and thanks for giving, well, it wasn't yours, but thanks for the providers that are helping make it a little more successful.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. I want to make sure that I use this opportunity to tell you that I think this Board of County Commissioners deserves a pat on the back for the fact that you don't dodge this issue, that you recognize it has a lot to do with the health and well-being of the youth in our community. And they need you to take that interest, and whether it's interest in state-level legislation or how we can best use that money, I think it's a very important thing, and I'd like to thank you for that.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time today, and I don't see any other questions. I move to receive and file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item I, a resolution authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of general obligation bonds, Series A, 2022, of Sedgwick County, Kansas, providing for the levy and collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on said bonds as they become due, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith.
Well, good. Did Lindsey write that whole description?
I did not.
He did not.
You can blame Garth when he gets up.
Commissioners, remember that at the end of the meeting, as a result of the vote, we do have to have some signatures, so please don't leave immediately after the meeting. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lindsey Pogerso to tell us what we need to do.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. For the record, I suppose, Lindsey Pogerso, CFO. So I have the pleasure of doing the introduction, and then turning it over to our subject matter experts who are here with us today. Tom Calico with Baker Tilly, who is our municipal advisor and goes through and runs all of these numbers for us, as well as Garth Herman, who you saw recently, who is with Gilmore &amp; Bell, our bond counsel. So I do want to take a quick moment to thank them for all of their help. This is something that starts back when you authorize a project, and then we have multiple resolutions following that in order to make this happen. So my thanks to them, but also to our staff. We have a number of folks who this is their first bond issuance that they've had to work on due to some staff turnover, and they've done exemplary job, so I want to say thank you to them. So what you are authorizing today is a bond sale that was held yesterday, and I communicated some very brief information to you about that. We had much better outcomes even than expected, so very good news on that front. So after today, we will get the work done to issue the bonds, reimburse ourselves for those expenses by the end of the year, which will be very helpful. So I am first going to ask Tom to come to the podium, again, Tom Calico, to kind of tell you a little bit about the bond sale and share with you our exciting news about credit ratings, which you know make my heart happy.
Very good. Good morning, welcome.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Tom Calico with Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors. So we're here about the general obligation bonds, Series 2022A. The item you have before you this morning is to adopt a resolution which authorizes the sale of the bonds and then sets in place the terms of that bond issue. It's a 20-year general obligation bond in the amount of $2,445,000. That was actually reduced, you might recall, from $2,680,000 as we received, which is commonplace, a premium bid for the bonds, which allowed us to resize downward. The proceeds of the bonds are going to be used to finance various road improvements, specifically the Sharice Woods Edition Phase One and the Osage G Project and various bridge projects. We received bids yesterday, competitive bids for the bonds, at 1:00 p.m. We got four bids representing about 30 banks. The winner with the lowest bid, the lowest true interest cost, was Robert W. Baird and Company out of their Milwaukee, Wisconsin office. They bid a true interest cost of 3.39%. You might be interested, Baird typically bids with a syndicate of banks, and you might be interested to know there were a couple of somewhat local and somewhat local banks that were in their syndicate, specifically Country Club Bank and Commerce Bank were in Baird's syndicate. We believe that this true interest cost is a market competitive rate based both on comparable recent transactions and various market indices. As we always do with your bond issues, we applied for a rating, this time with Standard and Poor's, or S&amp;P, I guess, as they go by now. They affirmed the county's AAA general obligation bond rating and assigned that rating to this bond issue. In their report, S&amp;P noted various strengths of the county. Those include a broad and very diverse economy with, of course, a concentration in aviation, very strong general fund reserves, very strong financial management, and a manageable debt burden. So with that, I recommend award of the bonds to Robert W. Baird and Company. Before I leave the podium, I do want to recognize the excellent work of your finance department. There's a lot that goes into making one of these bond issues happen. There's a lot of information that has to be provided to both potential investors and the rating agencies, and they do an excellent job with that. I also want to commend the continually great work of your bond counsel, Gilmore &amp; Bell, they're a pleasure to work with. You, I'm anticipating a question. Yes, we did look at whether there were any opportunities to refund any of your outstanding debt at this time to try and achieve interest cost savings. And unfortunately, at this juncture, there isn't, but we will continue to monitor that, of course, on your behalf. So with that, I'd answer any questions.
Well, I appreciate the information you provided today, and congratulations to our finance department and our leadership team that make this happen, to have our bond rating where it is, that allows us to get favorable interest rates. So I want to thank everyone and Lindsey's staff, but it's also the rest of the staff for all of Sedgwick County that make this happen. So thank you very much for that. So you need two actions from one action, or do we do that after?
Garth is going to handle all the procedural stuff. I do want to say, for the folks who are watching, and I realize, as I say it now, that not everybody is familiar with bond ratings. So just for complete clarity, AAA is the best rating you can have. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. Thanks for that information.
Good morning.
You're going to walk us through what we got to vote on.
Exactly. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Garth Herman with Gilmore &amp; Bell, the county's bond counsel. I love coming in here after Tom and Lindsey because they do such a great job that they make mine very, hopefully, short and easy to do. So as Tom mentioned, the final step is going to be the actual award of the bond sale that occurred yesterday, as well as the adoption of the bond resolution, which contains the forms and details of the bonds, the use of the funds, and the repayment provisions there. A couple of things I would like to point out with regards to that is just a reminder that these bonds are providing the permanent financing for two special assessment projects as well as four bridge projects. The length of the bond issue is a 20-year bond issue. The bridge portion of the bonds will be repaid over 20 years. The Osage Country Edition special assessment projects will also be repaid over a 20-year period. With regards to the Sharice Woods Edition, that project is over a 15-year period, which is kind of standard for what the county's special assessment policy is. So I will also stand for any questions, but if not, I would request a motion and second on the formal award of the bid of the bond sale to Robert W. Baird. And then the second action would be a motion and a second on the adoption of the resolution itself.
Very good. Questions? I don't see any questions today, so on the first motion that I'd like to make is to approve the formal sale of the bonds. Anything else need to go into that discussion? Okay, good. We have a motion and a second by Commissioner Lopez. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Okay, the second half?
The adoption of Resolution 187-2022.
Very good. I move that we adopt Resolution 187-2022.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Anything else?
That's all I have. Thank you all very much.
We spent a lot of money, but thank you. Actually, we saved a lot of money. I should clarify that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item J, ZON 2022-00054 and CON 2022-00039, Zone Change Request in the County from RR Rural Residential to SF20 Single Family Residential for Site Development. Conditional Use Request in the County to Permit a Community Swimming Pool and Accessory Apartments, Generally Located on the Northeast Corner of North 167th Street West and West Central Street.
Well, good morning, Scott.
Good morning. Scott Wadele from the Planning Department. Thank you for the opportunity to present on this item. So this item is being presented today because one of the applicants, the Jacks, are asking that the requested zone change and conditional use not be applied on their property. And I'll explain which property is theirs in just a moment. In terms of the original request, the applicants for this case are TCRS LLC, which Jeff Lang is the contact for that, according to State Registry, and Kenneth and Allison Jack. So there are two parties involved as the applicants, and they are represented by the company MKEC. The applicant is requesting a zone change from Rural Residential District to SF20 Single Family Residential, a conditional use to allow accessory apartments on each lot, and a conditional use to allow for a neighborhood swimming pool. The applicants have indicated that they are requesting the zone change and conditional use so that they can develop a large lot residential development with 84 lots. The conditional use will allow each lot to have an accessory apartment, which some people refer to as a carriage house or an in-law suite, and would allow for a neighborhood swimming pool. In terms of the property, the subject site is generally located at the northeast corner of 167th and Central, or Fourth Street, as you can see here on the aerial. The subject site is roughly 151.44 acres in size and located in the unincorporated Sedgwick County. The site is zoned Rural Residential and in use as agricultural land. In terms of context, properties to the north, south, east, and west are all zoned Rural Residential, which I think, I'll show that map in just a minute. residential, which I think, I'll show that map in just a moment. Properties to the north are in use as agricultural land. Properties to the south and west are in use as agricultural land and developed with single family residential dwellings. Properties to the east are developed with single family residential dwellings. In terms of the larger context, within a quarter mile south on the east side of 167th, there is a subdivision proposed with 34 SF20 Single Family Residential lots, approximately an acre, a little bit more in size. In terms of review, on October 20th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing for this item. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the request, 14 to 0. One member of the public spoke in opposition to the application with concerns of large development in a primarily rural area. On November 7th, the Citizen Advisory Board for District 3 considered the application. The cab recommended approval of the request, 7 to 0. No members of the public spoke on this item at that meeting. On November 18th, one of the applicants, the Jacks, expressed disapproval for the zone change and conditional use on their property. However, he did not want to withdraw his name from the application as it would cause the remaining applicants to be forced to withdraw their application and wait up to one year to reapply for the zone change and conditional use. So instead, the Jacks are requesting that the zone change not be applied to their property and again, I will show which one that is. No protest were received for this case, therefore the zone change request can be approved with a simple majority. In terms of related planning cases, I just want to note that the plat for this property was approved by the Planning Commission on November 3rd. In terms of commission action, it is recommended that the Board of County Commissioners adopt the findings of the MAPC and approve the zone change with both applicants. And again, this is the standard recommendation that's carried forward from the MAPC, which was before the Jacks had expressed their desire not to see the zoning on their property. This would require a simple majority or three of five county commissioners. Now you have a number of alternatives. One of them is to partial, is to approve the application but partially and to not apply it to the Jacks' property. This would require a override of the MAPC recommendation and would require two-thirds majority or four or five votes. You can deny the application by making alternative findings to override the MAPC recommendation. This also would take four or five votes. Or as always, you can return the case to the MAPC for further consideration with a statement specifying the basis for the failure to approve or deny the application. This requires a simple majority or three of five votes. So with that, I will pause and then I'll take you through the graphics here and some of the photos. So you can see the site here outlined in red. There are two parcels that make up the subject site. Here you can see the one in the northeast corner. This is the Jacks' property, which is in fact their residence and you can see that they access that from Hickory Street. So that is the portion that they're requesting not be approved as part of this application. This is the zoning map. You can see that the area, the larger area around it is zoned rural residential as well as the subject site. This is the map from the comprehensive plan showing that the area is recommended for agricultural, residential, and a portion of it for employment in the future. This is the graphic that was submitted in terms of the layout with the application and we have included a graphic that shows the plat that was approved. The one caveat to that is that on Beckett Court and the eastern portion of this northeastern portion, the Planning Commission approved it with a full right-of-way connecting it to Hickory in the adjacent subdivision. This is the protest map. Again, no protests were received for this one. These are photos from the site. It's much what you would expect in agricultural use in the area. And back to the aerial. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you Scott. Do any of the commissioners have any questions? I'm going to have some here a little bit later, but I want to make sure I hear from the applicant and agent first and see if anyone else wants to speak on this issue, but I will have some questions.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Applicant or agent? Please state your name for the record.
Good morning. Brian Lindaback, MKEC Engineering 411 North Webb Road on behalf of the owner and applicant. We agree with staff comments. We would ask that you not approve the zoning on the Jacks' property at their request. It would be a hardship on the owner of the property if this were to go back through Planning Commission at a later date. They do plan to develop the property as soon as possible.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. This primarily deals with the issue of access, is that correct? Off their, off their?
That's right. Yeah, as an action item from the plating, the Planning Commission required access at Hickory Street and, which is fronts their, their front door, if you will.
So they're trying to avoid, if you will, a lot of traffic going past their driveway or past our home?
Yeah, they were not in favor of that and as a result, they said, hey, we don't need our property rezoned, we'll just do it at a later date.
So curiously, what about fire protection access to the neighborhood?
That has been provided as part of the plating process. There's access that is granted and as far as that plat goes, we haven't seen the plat yet. It's not, it's still being vetted out and it'll come to county commission in the near future.
There will be some type of fire, a fire gate?
Actually, there's no fire gate. It's, it'll be full public right-of-way, so it's just as open public right-of-way there.
But that will not go past the Jacks' property? It'll go someplace, there'll be other, other access points?
It will join the Jacks' property on their common property line. The road will.
Okay.
If, if, I know this is hard to see on the aerial photograph there, but currently there's a dead end at the Hickory Street. That right-of-way is a full 70-foot right-of-way and it just dead-ends right into the subject property as well as the Jacks' property on the center line. So 35 foot on this, on our subject property and 35 foot on the Jacks' property and we've dedicated 35 foot of full street right-of-way on the subject property as part of the plat.
You're with MKEC?
That's right. I'm Brian Lindaback.
Are you, are you speaking on behalf of the applicant today or the developer today?
Yes.
Okay. I am curious about the one acre, roughly one acre lots. Is the intent to use septic systems for each one of these lots?
That is the plan, yes, at this time. But we've also provided for future sewer connections by plating sewer easements as well. That's part of the requirements of the plat being within the three-mile ring of the City of Wichita.
And each septic system will be enough to handle both the primary home as well as accessory?
Certainly, yes.
Structure?
Accessory structures are like, you know, Scott Wadele just mentioned, it's more of the option to install, you know, a separate dwelling unit for perhaps a, you know, child or a mother-in-law or perhaps if they wanted to have it be part of their poolhouse. Certainly that would be, you know, allowed as part of just a single lot and they would share water and sewer and it wouldn't be allowed to be separated.
I'll ask my councilor, this may not be an appropriate question. Let me ask a question. Is there going to be an HOA on this prop, on this development?
That is planned, yes.
Okay. And does the HOA plan to have some type of control whether or not they would allow accessory apartments on each property? Is that something HOA would then control, assuming the, the conditional use is approved by government, then, then they would have to make, if you will, a request through the HOA to get approval for the accessory apartments?
Yes, there'll be architectural controls, so those things would be baked into the approvals.
Okay. Do we normally, do we normally allow, so one septic system for two dwelling units if, if they build the accessory apartment and on a one acre lot, is that considered a normal configuration? I see Scott's going like this, okay.
I might mention also, recently, we did another subdivision that has these very exact same conditions. It's at 127th and just north of 29th Street for a similar-sized development. So thought that would be beneficial for your knowledge. That was probably three or, three to six months ago.
I know we've seen a lot of applications for conditional use on a single property before. That's, that's fairly normal, but to do this for 84 lots at one time, I think is precedent setting. I'm not sure I've seen that before.
We just did that on the project I was just referring to. Another one we did it on years ago in 2006 was the waterfront residential development off of 13th. We did the very same thing there for the very same reasons. If, if you have a large house, poolhouse, you want to be able to have a dwelling unit within the poolhouse, this would allow for that without having to have, go through the whole process again. So it's more of a, an option for each owner if they so choose, but it's definitely not a requirement or anything like that.
Okay. So my questions right now. Thank you so much, Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, a couple of questions. It's 84 homes, there's a potential of 168 structures built on these lots, correct?
You could look at it that way. I look at it more as there's, there's 84, you know, 84 homes and, you know, accessory structures could be, you know, very much part of, part of the main unit, if you will. It's just maybe just close proximity. So I don't really look at it as a, I look at it as more of a convenience factor for the owner that they could have, you know, a place for their son or daughter to come home to and not be part of the main dwelling unit, have some privacy.
But you're looking at putting 168 homes on septic tanks?
It would just, it would just be one per lot, one septic tank per lot.
But you're putting, there's 84 septic tanks, but you're putting 184, 168 homes on those septic tanks?
Certainly.
Where are they, where's the water coming from?
It's coming from Rural Water District or City of Wichita.
Rural Water District provide sufficient water for firefighting?
I'm not certain that that would be the case here, but we have worked with the-
I'm pretty certain that's not the case.
We've worked with the fire chief and he's accepting of the development that we've proposed.
So for 168 structures on this small area that we've got, we're trucking in water for every one of those fires that we're going to fight out there?
Yeah, and I don't think that's too far different than other subdivisions out here and-
It is when we consider how many structures you're putting in a small area. You're putting 168 structures in there. What, what kind of guarantees if this was approved and it moves forward, do the new homeowners have when they show up? And I've seen it over and over again, well, we weren't told when we were purchased this property that we could have everybody putting these structures in in addition to their homes. Does every one of them on the contract, do they sign something that says, I acknowledge that I know that everybody around me can build an accessory structure?
It'll be part of their covenants and everybody has, you know, is prudent to understand their covenants. We could certainly put deed restrictions on them too that, you know, if that, if that would be amenable to your concern. Also, I'd mentioned that recently, as of yesterday, there was some approvals at city council to extend city water in, in short distance from this property. We have had significant conversations about the potential to serve this property with City of Wichita water, but it's been decided at this point in time to proceed with the Rural Water District.
Okay.
So there's options there to get water to the site.
I think we're setting a terrible precedence by providing, by right, the ability to add accessory apartments to these lots. We have in our zoning regulations, the ability for anyone to request a, an accessory apartment. And it goes through the normal process. It goes and the planning takes a look at it, it goes up to us to decide whether or not that it's appropriate. But now you're saying that on 84 lots, it's just by right. I think it's the worst precedence that we could ever pass.
Okay. We did just do that for the other subdivision I talked about.
Okay. I don't have any further questions. Commissioner Cruz.
So to Chairman's point, Scott, could you come up and just explain how we've already done this before and that this isn't setting a precedent? I mean, if we've already done this before, those claims are a little bold.
Well, and I'm listening to it and I'm, I just don't have the paperwork in terms of the documentation about what was done at that location. We have done accessory apartments by right as part of a development, but the ones that I can recall are in the city. That does not mean, those are just ones I can recall off the top of my head, that does not mean that that has not happened in the county.
So out of those that have been placed in the city to be able to build an accessory apartment, how many are actually built? Do we know that?
Oh, for the accessory apartments?
Right, because this is just an option. This isn't saying that we're going to have 100-plus structures. This is saying that out of the 86-
Yeah.
Lots, they could potentially put an accessory structure.
We, we do not have the research on that. That's something I'd be more than happy to look into, but we don't have the numbers about what actually gets constructed. I'd have to check with MABCD on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. So just following up Commissioner Cruz's line there, so when this, you say when this was done before, it was in, it was in the City of Wichita?
Yes, sir. I'm familiar with at least a handful of developments where that has occurred.
Well, the one he's referring to that said that we did this recently, that was inside the City of Wichita?
I cannot verify that. I don't have that recollection, either one way or the other.
Could he confirm for me one way or the other, please?
Pete may remember, this is at his, in his area. It's for the Croft Development. It's over there off 127th. That was just, they're, they haven't even built the development completely yet, but it's under construction, so.
How many, how many, how many lots in that development?
There's 10.
10?
Mm-hmm.
And how was size of the lots?
They're three and a half acres roughly.
Yeah, okay. So I find that to be quite a bit different than this one.
Nonetheless, it was approved just the same way as this one is proposed to be approved as a, as an option for all of the lots to utilize a, an accessory dwelling.
I am torn on this one. First of all, I've not had any expertise communication if it matters to anybody. I've not talked with anybody on this other than staff and so what I find different about this one is, is the population density. If every one of these 168 homes was developed and built and they, each one had four people, you're looking at over 600 people living in a very dense area. And because they are in the county, unincorporated, they could do things like have, they could burn their trash, they could have cows and roosters, they could have firing ranges in their backyards. We've seen that recently where that's been a problem in a population-dense area. And I'm very pro Second Amendment, pro gun, no question, but I think that's, that would be probably fairly problematic in this area. Four-wheelers, bonfires, noise, you talk about all kinds of things that happen in the county are going to happen in a very city-like neighborhood without fire hydrants, without streetlights, without curb and gutter. I don't know, this, this makes a lot of sense to me and I do think it is different than what we saw before. I think it is precedent-setting. I'm uncomfortable with it. I generally like property rights. I want people to do what they want to do on their own property. But I can tell you, I'm glad this is in District 3 rather than District 5 because I think we're going to deal with this a lot in the future. Also, it's going to be policed by the sheriff rather than the city. It'll be serviced by the fire district. I think this is going to be a lot of, a lot of problems. I don't know that I like the way this is being presented and so in terms of the golden factors, I think there's a number of golden factors here that I think we can use to deny this. I'm not sure what to do at this point. I would like to say I support property rights. If people want to live in a neighborhood like this, by all, by all means, go for it. But I think we're looking at it having a lot of problems. So I may reluctantly vote yes, but, or vote to support this. I do think this is going to be a lot of problems going forward. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you. Anything else Scott?
You know, we reached out to planning staff back in the office for their recollection of a similar development out in the unincorporated county and the one that staff could think of off the top of their heads was approximately 12 lots in size.
Okay. Well, I think there's a lot of difference between 10 lots that the applicant has mentioned on three and a half acres and something with 84 lots on 151 acres. I'm not, I'm not comfortable at all with this application. Though what I'd like to do, if there's not any other comments from the commissioner, I'd like to move that we return this to the MAPC to look at the precedence that is being set as a result of allowing- being set as a result of allowing this density in the unincorporated areas that's being provided water by the rural water district that does not have enough water in order to be able to fight the fires, which means that we're going to be running an awful lot of tankers in there for any kind of fire that we've got. So it does impact our fire district, number one. I think the question on whether or not the one lot is included in this or not is a question. It needs to be brought back to us clean rather than us trying to fix it here from the bench. And the M A P C can fix it if that's the desire. So again, I move that we return this to the M A P C for further work.
Say.
We have a motion to second any further discussion. See, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Cruz.
No.
Commissioner Howell. Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you all. Appreciate your time today. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item K, adopt policy change for Cedric County Department of Corrections.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Steve Stonehouse with the Department of Corrections. We're here this morning to talk about a revision to a J I A C policy. And this is an odd process that we typically don't do with departmental policies because typically we just do that within our own department and programs. But this policy is governed by the Kansas Department of Corrections standards, which require the Board of County Commissioners to approve of a policy involving restraints in the Juvenile Intake and Assessment Center. It has been reviewed by County Legal. It has went through the Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board. And now it's to the Board of County Commissioners. And the next step will be the review by the Kansas Department of Corrections Secretary. The revisions to this policy are in response to the Community Task Force recommendations, who looked into standards related to juvenile corrections in the wake of the death of Cedric Lofton. So that's how these changes came about to the policy. So that's what we're here to talk about today. The specific task force recommendations were to, their deadline was July 1st, to update the policy stating that once youth is secured in a cell, instead of holding him down in the prone position, close the cell door and allow the youth to calm down. Do not use any position that covers youth chest. Only allow the prone position to be used to cuff and sit or cuff and stand. That's a transition. Instead of holding someone down, just transition to the next procedures. And then one staff is responsible to video, audio recording any incidents restraining, keeping time. Make sure the youth is transitioned and somebody, essentially it establishes a third party not involved in the restraint. I hope I'm not doing this. I don't think I am. I don't know how to stop it if I'm doing it.
Tonya, the opinion to why we have sudden-
It's your beat.
Hurry up and get me out of here. So this establishes a third party-
Hold on, Steve. I don't know how this is going out over-
Can you turn on my microphone, please? Thank you.
How about now?
Okay, whatever was happening, it stopped.
Did you kill that one? No, that's okay. Okay.
Is Steve's mic live?
It is yours. That's hers. It's the clerk's.
All right.
It sounds like it's a sound is back.
Yeah. So this establishes a third person, a third party not involved in the restraint to monitor it and make sure that the youth involved in the restraint is physically in good standing while he or she is going through the restraint. So those are the recommendations from the task force. And the additional references that we used to revise this policy are the Kansas Department of Corrections Juvenile Services Standards, the Juvenile Justice Delinquency Prevention Manual, the Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Act of 1974, the Death in Custody Reporting Act of 2013, and then, like I said, the task force recommendations. The highlights of the revisions to the policy is that J I A C staff may not keep a youth restrained while in a holding room. Holding rooms are locked, so once they're in there, they can simply lock the door. Establish a lead role in restraints. Ensure the prone position is used only to transition youth. Limitations on the youths of the prone restraint specifies only authorized holds, transitions, and maneuvers from training may be used. A team with one non-participatory staff member who shall contact medical services provider, observe application of restraints, monitor youth's behavior and well-being. We've established an internal review of use of force incidents and conducting debriefs. This will be looked at by an internal investigator outside of youth corrections and then an annual report to the Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board to review the incidences at J I A C. The Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board, Team Justice, already reviews the operations at J I A C since it's a state-mandated and funded program. So this goes along with established procedure for them. And that is, the changes to this policy, I would ask the board to approve sending this policy to the Kansas Department of Corrections for further approval and eventual adoption. Even though we have not adopted this policy, the practices have been changed in J I A C and were changed about in March to incorporate these items into our practice to ensure safety for the kids that we see at J I A C.
Okay, Steve. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Steve, for being here today. The policy that stated J I A C could not accept a youth without a psych evaluation was not followed, hence the fact that Cedric Lofton died in our custody. What makes us think that this policy will be followed to ensure that no other child dies at J I A C? Or any policy for that matter, since there was a policy violation that led to his death?
Well, Commissioner, the hope, whenever we are working with human beings trying to incorporate policy, is that their training will be followed and policy will be followed as much as possible. So that is, that's the hope with any policy, that staff will follow what's written. That's about all I can say to that, is that there's training, there's monitoring, there's review of the situation, and then there is discipline if people don't follow policy.
Thank you.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. Just following up on that question, if I understand correctly, the intake form, when it was in its final format, did not indicate that he needed a psych evaluation. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further questions? I appreciate you following up on the task force recommendations and taking a look at what we can do in the future. I acknowledge that any policy, we're dealing with humans each and every day, so you can't ever guarantee that if you put something down on paper that it'll be 100% followed. But hopefully by having a policy, having training, having the people acknowledge that this is the appropriate way of taking care of our youth, that it will be followed. Commissioner Howell has a question.
Thank you, Chairman. As I'm reading the policy as it's written currently, on page three of 14, item F near the top, it says, "Mechanical restraints shall never be used for purposes of restraining a youth for transportation by law enforcement." Although I agree with that, later on in this policy, it talks about how they can do pretty much whatever they need to do, transport safely. It also talks about, I guess, non-law enforcement who might have to transport youth however they need to transport them. But I believe that restraints are allowed for transportation. Am I saying that right?
Absolutely. We just don't write the restraints for any law enforcement agency. So if they would come back, if a law enforcement agency would come back to pick up a youth at J I A C to take him or her to a hospital and they wanted to restrain them, that is per their policies.
I'm just curious why it says, "Mechanical restraints shall never be used for purposes of transportation by law enforcement."
Well, we would not do that for them. That's what that means.
Okay, so this is a policy for our staff-
This is a policy for our staff.
Has no control on law enforcement itself.
Excuse me, no control over law enforcement. That's very consistent with our policies. If law enforcement ever has to come in one of our buildings for support, we don't write policy for a law enforcement agency. We write just for our own staff.
Okay. If I was going to summarize what this basically says, it says that we do what we have to do, but we'd like to minimize restraints and minimize prone positioning and allow de-escalation by isolation and letting someone calm down on their own. That's essentially what this, it's a very long document. That's the way I would summarize what it says here. So law enforcement is not being, we're not dictating to law enforcement what they have to do. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Chairman.
I would just add one more thing, that I did look at the numbers of 2022 restraints and have not been any use of mechanical restraints on J I A C, which is, that's very typical for J I A C not to use restraints on kids. Anything outside of that is outside the norm.
I guess I have one other question. In this particular case, obviously the subject here is Cedric Lofton. In this particular case, there was a good show of law enforcement at the scene where they apprehended him. And I think that there was a physical struggle that happened, and that's where the assaults on the officers took place. And he was placed in a RAP device and then taken to J I A C. One of the things, I don't know if it states anywhere in here as I'm reading this, but I think that in this particular case, there was absolutely, not that I can see, a reason to expedite the apprehension of Cedric Lofton. I think that there should have been given more time and possibly other strategies at the scene where they did pick him up. It doesn't really get into that in this policy here. So I'm curious, where is that policy going to be discussed or pummeled somewhere amongst government agencies? What is it going to say that we should give more time to allow someone who's done nothing wrong at that point? The only thing he did wrong was when he was being apprehended, he did assault the officers allegedly. So my question is, had he been given more time in the field, perhaps that would not have happened at all. Where is that policy being pummeled across government agencies?
Well, I'd say that policy would be with the law enforcement agency responding. But what we're doing locally with Cedric County is working with, you heard Dr. Craig earlier talk about the crossover youth practice model. Cedric Lofton was a crossover youth. He had his foot in both systems. So we're working with that model. And then we're also working with what's called Individualized Justice Plan for youth who have intellectual disabilities or mental health disabilities as a crisis response plan to tell the law enforcement, the social service agencies, Department of Corrections, anybody who might interact with that young person with a known disability of how he or she should be treated to prevent the things that you're talking about. We are working with WSU Center for, or Community Engagement Institute, who is going to facilitate those conversations with all of the entities who work with kids in that county. And that starts on Friday. And that will accumulate in an MOU of how I J Ps will be used in Cedric County. And then after that, we are going to start talking about common training for everybody who works with kids about adolescent development and things like that. So those are all building on task force recommendations, starting with the I J P.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Yesterday, we had the 180-day update for the task force. And I apologize, I had to leave early to get to the next meeting. But when you spoke, did you speak directly to this? And was there any questions that came up from the task force that-
I did speak to this and there was no questions. We had released this as a public document in August when Team Justice had it, and we had some requests from the public to see it. So it's been produced several different times. I've not had any other questions about it.
Do you know how long it'll take to get the final approval from the state?
I don't. When we did this originally in 2017, I think it took them about a month. But with the holidays, I just don't know what they're going to do with it when they get it.
Okay. Well, I really appreciate all the work that's gone into not just this policy, but all the policy changes that we've seen change since, you know, obviously everything that happened and really taking the recommendations from the task force seriously at every level. So I appreciate all of your work. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
So first of all, policy change is not justice for Cedric Lofton. So I'll say that first. Second of all, my colleague to my left over here stated that if we only had something in place that Cedric could have been allowed more time to calm down, we do have that in place. It's called I C T one. If this commission would fund it 24/7, there would be an opportunity for someone to calm down in a sense where they, it escalates to the point of their death. So fund I C T one or a program that is similar, and we could see a reduction in this. Cedric Lofton would still be alive today if I C T one was fully funded. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to remind everyone, I C T one can't be fully funded because we don't have staff to staff that. And we've talked about that a number of times, so I want to make sure that Commissioner Cruz remembers that we do not have staff from social workers in order to be able to fully fund that. But I appreciate all the comments. First of all, thank you last night for bringing the community and the task force up to speed on everything that's happening. I did see it on the news last night, so it is being covered. And I understand that now the public knows how many of these different suggestions have been approved, how many are in process and so forth, and this is part of that process today. So thank you very much for taking care of this. Evidently, Commissioner Cruz has another comment.
Yeah, the idea that we don't have staff is a false narrative that is perpetuated continually by this board. And if this commission really wanted to do what they say as far as mental health care, then you would fund prevention programs that are designed to work. And therefore, that's my comments. It's, if you keep perpetuating it, eventually people are going to believe it, and that's false.
Commissioner Lopez.
This is not the direction I thought we would be going this morning, but Rusty, do you mind coming up to answer a couple of questions for me?
Good morning, Rusty Lee, Sisti County Manager.
Appreciate you coming up. Can you just explain some of the issues we're having with EMS as an example, since that is a part of our I C T one program? And where we are trying to get them back to fully staffed and then what it would take to fully fund I C T one to be 24/7, seven days a week?
Sure. Let me preface that. The task force made recommendations that they would like to see community support across Cedric County, city of Wichita, Cedric County, whatever government entities are necessary to provide the funding for mobile mental health response. I C T one is something that has been in place, and we know that it works. We know that the level of efficiency, if you will, how many cases they can handle in a shift are fairly small, but that's not uncommon. This is hands-on people work. Whenever you go out to deal with somebody and you want to have time to work with them correctly, the number of people that you see over a period of a 10-hour shift is going to be fairly small. But the task force recommended enhancing I C T one or alternative solutions to mobile mental response, or mobile mental health response. City of Wichita Council authorized the spending of $750,000 from their general fund, which I believe they will fund on an annual basis, but that's their choice, in order to have social worker or mental health workers embedded with Wichita P D that could be dispatched out to these types of incidents. Last night during the task force meeting and prior to that, we've spoken to the issue that Calm Care is working directly with city of Wichita and with Wichita P D. They are making plans, they are finalizing plans, they'll be working to hire staff to field four teams, two, four two-person teams with mental health workers to initiate and launch that project. It won't be 24 hours, but it will be, right now, P D is planning between 8:00 a.m. and 3:00 a.m., seven days a week, that they will have these mental health teams available. Calm Care is working with Alora Forsey and 911. And- Alora Forsey and 911. And by January, the plan is to have all the details worked out on HIPAA issues, and we will have a mental health worker embedded at 911 to start screening calls and looking for the best solution. If police aren't needed, can we send that mobile response, that mobile mental health response, the one that's embedded with PD, or can we use the current crisis mobile response from Calm Care to address that, or ICT-1 when they're on duty? So, this really needs to be a multifaceted approach. ICT-1 is expensive. It's a police officer. It's a paramedic, and it's a mental health worker. The plan that PD and Calm Care are working on together will be two mental health workers. It's expensive, but it's not as expensive as having a paramedic and a police officer attached permanently. And then when we come to EMS, we are still down about 10 paramedics. We have some paramedics or some EMTs that are finishing class. They were able to hire a couple of paramedics from outside. So, our number of paramedics that we are down was around 20. By the end of this year, we'll be around 10 vacancies of paramedics. And hopefully, by end of first quarter, second quarter of next year, that number will dwindle a little bit more as long as we don't lose any through normal attrition. We should be below 10, maybe in single digits, on vacant paramedic positions. But until we staff pretty close to 100%, it's unlikely that, most departments don't ever staff at 100%. You always have some attrition, or you have, people are out on long-term leave or military. But nonetheless, when we get closer to that 100% staffing, to where ambulances are not being shut down routinely, where mobile response units in Clearwater and Cheney are staffed more regularly because those communities, particularly Clearwater, is concerned about response times and the availability of that unit because it's only being staffed about 70, 75% of the time now. We need to fill those basic needs for medical response, and then we start adding those community paramedicine-type resources, which would be enhancing ICT-1, if that's the will of the commission and the city council, if there's joint agreement that they want to spend the money for additional cops and additional paramedics to enhance that team. But we've got to get EMS to a point within the next, hopefully, the next six to eight months to where they're staffed well enough to where Chief Landerman can start talking with his staff about whether it's practical to add that community paramedicine-type paramedic that won't be on a truck and won't be available out in distant communities. They'll be attached to ICT-1 for mental health response only. So, there are some issues with getting there. We're getting closer. Calm Care is in the same boat. They're starting to have success with hiring, I understand, with their new pay plan, and they're confident that they're going to be able to hire the staff to support the program with PD. So, we'll have that mobile, community mobile mental health response hopefully up and running within the first quarter of 2023, along with one in the 911 center to help screen calls and make those referrals to that team and to ICT-1 and to Calm Care's existing mobile response group. So, there's potential light at the end of the tunnel. There's hope that within the first quarter or the first half of 2023, we'll have, we'll see enhancements in those areas where we have resources in the field that can respond and help these folks in mental crisis and not just a police officer. And I said a lot, but I hope that it helps answer your question.
No, that, I really appreciate that explanation because I think it shows the seriousness that we, as this commission, are taking this problem. And it's not just one thing that we're doing, but we're working across with our city, with our state, with everybody that we can to make sure that we're providing the services that are needed. It might not be ICT-1 specifically, but there are multiple things that are being, that are happening now that are in the works that hopefully will be able to get going. But there's a lot to this issue. It's not as simple as one fix is going to just come in and take care of all of our problems. And so, I appreciate you kind of breaking that down a little bit more and some of the work that's been going on because of this task force and the recommendations that they had. So, I appreciate all of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Rusty. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. I know that people like to pick and choose what they listen to when I say, so I just want to like reiterate the fact that I did say that if ICT-1 would have been on board when Cedric Lofton had his crisis, he would still be alive. That's my thing. My second thing is ICT-1 is not the only answer. And it seems like when we say that we don't have staff, it looks like you've come up with a really great solution that isn't 24/7, but is pretty close to it. So, there is staff available, according to what you had just mentioned, which is really delightful to hear because we know that a crisis doesn't happen 8 to 5 on Monday through Thursday. So, I'm glad to hear that we have had that going because where I live, there's a crisis all the time down at 13th and Topeka. And it's important that we understand that this community really is suffering. There are people, as it gets colder, that have no place to go. And so, that trickles down to other problems. So, I appreciate the opportunity to have this conversation. Again, policy change is not justice for Cedric Lofton.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you. I appreciate the comment that was just made a moment ago. I would agree that ICT-1 is not the only answer. Let me be clear, I'm supportive of mobile mental health services. I think that's our low-hanging fruit for Cedric County. It's more likely we can do that than we can do a lot of the other initiatives that are on our platform going forward. Mobile mental health is something we can afford to do as a commission sooner than later. It's the low-hanging fruit of our entire platform of initiatives dealing with mental health. I have a question for Rusty, since you're still there. How many of the officers that responded to Cedric Lofton had CIT training?
Commissioner, I don't have the answer to that question. I know that there were some CIT officers, but I can't give you a number.
I've been asking that question since the beginning of this situation, so I've yet to get an answer. As I've surmised, basically, very few, if any. I don't think that any of them had crisis intervention team training. I think that's also low-hanging fruit. I believe that that is something that should be more prevalent for our law enforcement officers, our sheriff's officers across the county. And when people say, well, there's not training opportunities available, let's make that happen. One of the things that I believe that failed in this particular situation was there was impatience. And crisis intervention team, I think, would have been more willing to provide a little bit more time to the situation. The second thing I would say is, we don't know what the outcome would have been, but let me speculate a little bit differently. Had he been taken to St. Joe Hospital that night, as he should have been, he probably would still be alive as well. So, we don't know. We can second-guess everything. We can armchair quarterback this entire discussion. At the end of the day, there's a lot of things that went wrong, and there's a lot of opportunities to learn and do things better. I agree that ICT-1 is a great program. The problem is, it's only, as Commissioner Cruz said, it's only 40 hours a week out of 168, and you only have one team that can respond. And on average, they typically do a treat-in-place a little bit less than one client per day, per shift. So, that's about, about, they do 10-hour shifts. Is that correct? I believe that's right. So, that's basically four clients a week, or maybe a little bit less, of treat-in-place for 120 man-hours of investment. I don't know that that's the best return on the investment. I think we ought to be looking at other ways to make this more efficient. Even you said, Mr. Leeds, that this is not the most efficient program. I think we ought to be looking at efficiencies. I love the idea of mobile mental health. We have to make it efficient. And so, we ought to be looking at ways to tweak the system, tweak our program to make it more efficient. I think CIT training is a big part of this. One of the things I talked about, rather than using ICT-1 in its current model, is to do, I would call this on-call services. When there's a crisis in the community, we ought to have a number of professionals that can respond to that, and we would pay them for their service call wherever it happens. And whenever it happens, they would provide a report, performance measures, we'd pay them. It might be more efficient to do it that way. And I've talked to Managers Stoltz about this numerous times. I'd like to stand up a program to try to do this a little bit differently. Rather than being addicted to one way, let's look at other ways. We've talked a lot about things that aren't part of this policy today, but I think it's an important discussion. And, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the chance to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Howell. And I was just going to make a comment that we are getting a little off track. We've discussed a lot of things that are not part of this agenda item. So, therefore, I move that we approve the policy change, sign the resolution, authorize Cedric County Department to provide the policy, the State of Kansas Department of Corrections.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and a discussion. Senator Nunn, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meisner. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And it is 11:17 in the morning. I promised everyone we'd start taking breaks around 11. We've kind of missed that by a little bit. So, let's try and be back by 11:35. We're in recess.
Make sure that your back is good.
My dog is dead.
You killed him.
I'm gonna go there and be voting for someone else.
We're back on. I want to welcome everyone back from break. At this time, we'll call them in back to order. My name is Clerk Next Item.
Item L, Discussion of Elected Official Pay Policy.
Thank you, and I'll welcome Sheena.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioner Sheena Schmitts, Chief Human Resources Officer. Today, we are set to discuss options for creating a policy to address elected official salaries that are on the general pay plan. The DA and the sheriff are on their separate pay plans. In discussion with the commission, you have provided feedback and have two options in front of you for discussion today. These documents have been created based on your feedback within the process. The point of difference is on item five under procedures. In option one, it states to move all elected officials to the same pay and then increase 3% in January. Option two moves all elected pay to $100,000, and that would remain until the commission reviews to change. Also, language in option two stating the district attorney and sheriff are exempt from this policy since they have their own plan. I would suggest if option one is approved or considered today to include that language that was inadvertently left off the draft in option one. And with that, I'll turn that over to discussion.
Thank you very much, Sheena. I appreciate it. I know there's been an awful lot of discussion on this in the past, actually, couple of months. And I know that Sheena has provided, I don't know how many different options through the manager to the commissioners. And we're at a point where we may have three votes. I can't tell you that until we bring this up. But I appreciate the time and effort that your staff and Tom and everyone else that's been involved in this. It's not perfect right now. And I did have discussions last evening with Tanya Buckingham. And I've also spoken with Brandy Bailey and Kelly Arnold about this. And there are still some concerns about those three offices in the future. So as with any resolution that we pass at a future date, we can review those things that are in those resolutions, and we can make changes in the future. So I just want to let the row offices, as we call them, know that, first of all, we should have included them as we went through this process, and they were not included. So that's partially my fault. And I accept that. And we will do better in the future. So as we look at anything that changes in the future, we're setting them as equal. We want to make sure that we recognize that as equal. So again, I apologize to them. But my personal opinion is that the option one with the exempting the sheriff and the DA is the appropriate option. And I don't have any lights on at this time, which surprises me. So I'll make that motion to see if, bring it up for discussion. And we have a motion and a second. Any comments on that? Commissioner Meister.
Thank you. And Sheena, you explained, and David, or Chairman, you also reiterated that we have had a lot of discussions on this. And in kind of full disclosure, I've been one that's had a number of opinions about this and a number of heartfelt feelings about all the options that we've mulled over. And I've got a number of issues with all those. This is not a long document, but I've probably got three or four issues that I just am not comfortable with. And out of respect to the three other independently and duly elected, as it says in the deal, duly elected, I think that I'm not comfortable determining that they should be in line with us. I don't mind discussing what we as county commissioners should be compensated at, but I'm not comfortable requiring the other three as well included in that. That's one of the main ones. But I've got a handful of other problems with it, so I will not be supportive of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just as a clarification, what's the source of funding for the salary of the three row office elected officials? What's the source of funding?
All of it. Lindsay, come up and answer that.
Okay. Commissioner Lindsay Pogers, your CFO. So for the base salaries that we're talking about today, the source is the general fund for all of them, as well as U5.
Okay. Now, they do have, they are generally fee-funded offices, but those fees do not support their own salary?
To the extent that, for example, the Register of Deeds is able to bring in officer fees, the per-page fees, that goes into the general fund. The amount of those fees more than pays for the Register of Deeds office functions and is considered to be part of a system to fund kind of all land records. But that goes into the general fund, and as we've talked about before, money is fungible. So we don't necessarily turn those fees into the dollars that support the salaries, if that makes sense.
And you mentioned Register of Deeds. What about the other two offices? Do they also generate fees that goes to general fund to pay for things like salary?
The clerk does, to some degree, with the licenses and permits and some of those items. The treasurer's office, of course, collects all of the taxes on behalf of the county through the tax office. And so those are distributed across the five county property tax funds plus the fire district general fund. So certainly those sources. And then, as you know, if there's ever any residual funding left over at the end of the year in the treasurer's auto license fund, that is statutorily required to come back to the general fund.
Okay. Do we know how it works in other counties across the state? Who sets the salary for the Register of Deeds and clerk and treasurer in other counties? Do we have that information?
I would just say, I don't know how it's set. I know what some of the wages are. We've asked for that information. But the particulars on how it's said, I don't have that.
I was looking up some salaries, and it seems like there's a pretty big variation amongst different counties on how those, what the salaries happen to be. Some of them are much higher than what our current electives are making. A lot of them are lower. But my point is, there's a variation between, from county to county. It's not like it's a standard number. And so I don't know if the Board of County Commissioners in the various counties set those salaries, or if the elected officials themselves have some input into what those numbers ought to be. But...
Kelly Arnold, County Clerk. It is the role of the county commission to set the salaries for Cedric County or County employees. So the county commission adopts the budget for our offices.
And that's statewide?
That's statewide statute.
All right. That's all my questions right now. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see the other, oops, Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. Sheena or Lindsay, could you just come up and explain what each individual salary we're talking about is at right now? So deeds, clerk, treasurer, and all five commissioners?
Yes. The Board of County Commission, all salaries are set at $95,000.
And that includes the car allowance and phone allowance?
That does not. That's just base salary.
So what would be the total of those salaries?
Give us just a second. We'll get that for you. And then the rows' base salary is at $98,570.
For all of them?
Yes.
So policy, this policy, the number one option, can you just explain, just in real general terms, how option one is different than option two?
Yes. Option one states compensation levels are discussed every budget cycle and approved by a majority vote of the B O C C every August. If the compensation level for general employees is 3% or less, all elected officials will be included in that compensation. If the compensation is more than 3%, elected officials will only receive the cap of 3% unless the majority of the B O C C votes otherwise as part of the budget discussion in a public meeting. That's option one. Option two states effective January 1, 2023, all B O C C positions, as well as the Cedric County Treasurer's Office, the Register of Deeds, and the County Clerk will receive a base wage of $100,000 per year. The sheriff and the DA are exempted since they have their own pay plans, and the B O C C will discuss elected official salary status during the budget hearings of every year.
So what would a 3% increase be? I'm not doing the math here. So we're sitting at, the row offices are making roughly around $3,000 more than the people who are setting their salary, essentially, right?
So a 3% on top of the 98,500, I'm sorry, $98,570 equals 101,570.
Okay. And that does, are they, do they get phone, and so they get that allowance too?
Yes.
So...
Also, language in option two stating the district attorney and sheriff are exempt from this policy since they have their own plan. I would suggest if option one is approved or considered today to include that language that was inadvertently left off the draft in option one. And with that, I'll turn that over to discussion.
Thank you very much, Sheena. I appreciate it. I know there's been an awful lot of discussion on this in the past, actually, a couple of months. And I know that Sheena has provided, I don't know how many different options through the manager to the commissioners. And we're at a point where we may have three votes. I can't tell you that until we bring this up. But I appreciate the time and effort that your staff and Tom and everyone else that's been involved in this. It's not perfect right now. And I did have discussions last evening with Tanya Buckingham. And I've also spoken with Brandy Bailey and Kelly Arnold about this. And there are still some concerns about those three offices in the future. So as with any resolution that we pass at a future date, we can review those things that are in those resolutions and we can make changes in the future. So I just want to let the row offices, as we call them, know that, first of all, we should have included them as we went through this process and they were not included. So that's partially my fault. And I accept that. And we will do better in the future. So as we look at anything that changes in the future, they are, we're setting them as equal. We want to make sure that we recognize that as equal. So again, I apologize to them. But I, my personal opinion is that the option one with the exempting the sheriff and the DA is the appropriate option. And I don't have any lights on at this time, which surprises me. So I'll make that motion to see if, bring it up for discussion.
One second.
And we have a motion and a second. Any comments on that? Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you. And Sheena, you explained, and David, or Chairman, you also reiterated that we have had a lot of discussions on this. And in kind of full disclosure, I've been one that's had a number of opinions about this and a number of heartfelt feelings about all the options that we've mulled over. And I am, I've got, I've got a number of issues with all those. This is not a long document, but I've probably got three or four issues that I just am very not comfortable with. And out of respect to the three other independently and duly elected, as it says in the deal, duly elected, I think that I'm not comfortable determining what, that they should be in line with us. I don't mind discussing what we as county commissioners could, should, should be compensated at, but I'm not comfortable requiring the other three as well included in that. That's one of the main ones. But I've got a handful of other problems with it, so I will not be supportive of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just as a clarification, where does the, what's the source of funding for the salary of the three row office elected officials? What's the source of funding?
All of, Lindsay, come up and answer that.
Okay.
Commissioners, Lindsay Pogerso, you're CFO. So for the base salaries that we're talking about today, the source is the general fund for all of them, as well as U5.
Okay. Now, they do have, they are generally fee-funded offices, but those fees do not support their own salary?
To the extent that, for example, the Register of Deeds is able to bring in officer fees, those, the per-page fees, that goes into the general fund. The amount of those fees more than pays for the Register of Deeds office functions and is considered to be part of a system to fund kind of all land records. So, but that goes into the general fund and as we've talked about before, money is fungible. So we don't necessarily turn those fees into the dollars that support the salaries, if that makes sense.
And you mentioned Register of Deeds. What about the other two offices? Do they also generate fees?
The clerk does.
That goes to general fund to pay for things like salary?
The clerk does to some degree with the licenses and permits and some of those items. The treasurer's office, of course, collects all of the taxes on behalf of the county through the tax office. And so those are distributed across the five county property tax funds plus the fire district general fund. So certainly those sources. And then, as you know, if there's ever any residual funding left over at the end of the year in the treasurer's auto license fund, that is statutorily required to come back to the general fund.
Okay. Do we know how it works in other, other counties across the state? Who sets the salary for the Register of Deeds and clerk and treasurer in other counties? Do we have that information?
I would just say, I don't, I don't know how it's set. I know what some of the wages are. We've asked for that information. But the particulars on how it's said, I don't have that.
I was looking up some salaries and it seems like there's a pretty big variation amongst different counties on how those, what the salaries happen to be. Some of them are much higher than what our current electeds are making. A lot of them are lower. But yes, my point is there's a variation between, from county to county. It's not like it's a standard number. And so I don't know if the Board of County Commissioners in the various counties set those salaries or if the elected officials themselves have some input into what those numbers ought to be, but.
Kelly Arnold, county clerk. It is the role of the county commission to set the salaries for Sedgwick County, Board of County employees. So the county commission adopts the budget for our offices.
And that's statewide?
That's statewide statute.
All right. That's all my questions right now. Thank you.
I thank you. I don't see any other, oops, Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. Sheena or Lindsay, could you just come up and explain what each individual salary we're talking about is at right now? So deeds, clerk, treasurer, and all five commissioners?
Yes, the Board of County Commission, all salaries are set at $95,000.
And that includes the car allowance and phone allowance?
Does not. That's just base salary.
So what would be the total of those salaries?
Give us just a second. We'll get that for you. And then the, the rows' base salary is at $98,570.
For all of them?
Yes.
Okay. So policy, this policy, the number one option, can you just explain, just in real general terms, how option one is different than option two?
Option one states compensation levels are discussed every budget cycle and approved by a majority vote of the B O C C every August. If the compensation level for general employees is 3% or less, all elected officials will be included in that compensation. If the compensation is more than 3%, elected officials will only receive the cap of 3% unless the majority of the B O C C votes otherwise as part of the budget discussion in a public meeting. That's option one. Option two states, effective January 1, 2023, all B O C C positions, as well as the Sedgwick County Treasurer's Office, the Register of Deeds, and the county clerk will receive a base wage of $100,000 per year. The sheriff and the DA are exempted since they have their own pay plans. And the B O C C will discuss elected official salary status during the budget hearings of every year.
So what would a 3% increase be? I'm not doing the math here. So we're sitting at, the row offices are making roughly around $3,000 more than the people who are setting their salary essentially, right?
So a 3% on top of the 98,500, or I'm sorry, $98,570 equals 101,570.
Okay. And that does, are they, do they get phone and, so they, they get that allowance too?
Yes.
So does that 98 include their phone allowance? It doesn't?
It does not. That's just base salary.
Okay. So you guys are getting the, you have those numbers? So with phone allowance for both B O C C, what, what's the phone allowance and car allowance for B O C C?
I calculated, I calculated B O C C is a $4,800 car allowance plus a $750 phone allowance.
Okay.
And that would be across the board for any elected. Was it $100,000?
500.
500.
Okay.
Thank you. I don't see any other comments. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
No.
Commissioner Cruz.
No.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item M, Report of the Boards of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on December 1, 2022.
Thank you. Manager Stoltz.
Thank you.
Do you have any comments?
I do. Before Joe comes up, Commissioner, I want to make you and the citizens of Sedgwick County aware of a recognition he's got that I think is fairly notable. As you know, the county in its, our many facets of duty have staff that belong to professional organizations. And mostly we do that so we can always maintain best practices within the county and for the people of Sedgwick County. Joe, in the purchasing world, belongs to the National Institute of Government Purchasing, which is called NIGP for its acronym short. And that entity sent us a note, it's been a while, but we've been trying to get everybody here to recognize Joe, sent us a note informing us that he had won the NIGP Certified Procurement Professional Certification. He didn't win it, he earned it. He went and studied and got all the certifications. And I just want to read you a paragraph from Diane Daly, who is the director of NIGP. It's impressive what Joe has accomplished here. It says, and this is a fairly short paragraph, "The NIGP CPP program offers unique attributes when compared to other procurement-related professional certifications. It is the only certification that is anchored in the Public Procurement Competency Framework. The framework is rooted in research produced by the Volcker Alliance that seeks effective public service throughout workforce competencies. It is the only certification that targets mid-to-executive-level procurement leaders in the public sector. It is the only certification that integrates with NIGP's Pathways Programs featuring competency development within 33 modules. And it is the only certification that expands beyond public procurement's technical aspects and accesses, and assesses the more holistic competencies needed to be successful as a leader within a public entity embracing elements of leadership, business principle, and procurement strategy." It should also be noted that Joe is among the first professional leaders to earn this distinguished certification. So this is very significant. We're in rare air here when Joe comes into the room. He has been, since I've been manager, even before I was manager, Joe, we all know Charter 68, right? We all know the procurement policy, but Joe knows it like the back of his hand. And he can recite it and he keeps us straight on this and he keeps us within the guardrails. He is as honest and ethical a person that I know and I rely so heavily on him. So I just wanted to take that minute to recognize Joe and tell you of this fantastic accomplishment that he has achieved. And now we're ready for bid board.
Very good. Well, first of all. On behalf of the Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioners, Joe, we're honored to have you as one of our employees and congratulate you very much on your achievements.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you, Tom, sir. And I want to thank Lindsay Pogerso and Brent Shelton, who have steered me with their great leadership. So I'm humbled and a little embarrassed. So if I keep my head down most of this, you understand why, right? Thank you very much. Well, for the record, Joe Thomas, purchasing director, and we have six items from the regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts that we'd like to have your approval. The first is our on-call SAP Support Services for the Enterprise Resource Planning. And that's to accept, the recommendation is to accept the quote from H R Focal Point, and that's at the contract rate listed for a term of five years. Second item is the online marketplace for various departments, and this is a recommendation to establish a contract with Amazon Business. We'll be utilizing the Harris County, Texas Department of Education, which is jointly tied into the Choice Partners Contract 22-045-KN-01. That effective date is through August 16, 2023, and it also has options to renew for four additional one-year periods. Item number three is hardware-software-related products for Division of Information and Technology. And this is a recommendation to establish a contract with Dell utilizing the Midwestern Higher Education Compact Contract, and that's 041-52022. And that's in effect through June 30 of 2025. Item number four is Cisco Switching Products for Division of Information and Technology. And this recommendation is to establish a contract with Logicalis utilizing the State of Kansas Contract 47258. And that will be in effect through September 30 of 2024. Item number five is the Special Process Server for 18th Judicial District Court, Court Trustee, Non-4D. This recommendation is to accept the proposal from Red Spade Investigations Incorporated. We're going to establish a contract pricing for two years and have three one-year options to renew. And our final item for today is the 2023 Recommended Insurance Renewals for Risk Management. And this recommendation is to accept the insurance premium renewals as listed for the estimated cost of $440,071.10. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions and recommend approval.
Well, thank you, Joe. I appreciate it. Every one of us have received the minutes from the meeting. Commissioner Meitzner has a question, though.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick one. Joe, congratulations again.
Thank you, sir.
Could you just please recite Charter 68 by memory for me?
Four score and seven years.
Thank you.
I have a little confusion, yes.
Very good. Well, I don't see any other comments. And as I said, everyone has reviewed the minutes and understand each one of these eight items. So I move that we approve the recommendations of the Board in Bids and Contracts. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Sheena, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Manager Stoltz.
Good morning, Commissioner. Again, Tom Stolz, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items N through double letter AH this morning.
Thank you. I move that we approve consent November through Alpha Hotel.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Sheena, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
This time, I'd like to recess the Board of County Commissioners meeting for December 7th and call the meeting, the governing body of Fire District Number One, for December the 7th. And Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present.
Next item, please.
Public Agenda.
We did not have anyone signed up on public agenda, so next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes. Item A, Regular Fire Meeting Minutes of November 2, 2022.
Commissioners, everyone has had an opportunity to review the minutes from November 2 and also from November 16 to move to approve our items Alpha and Bravo.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Sheena, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Manager Stoltz.
Commissioners, again, Tom Stolz, recommend approval of consent item C in the fire agenda.
I move to approve consent item Charlie.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Sheena, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
And we will cover legislative issues involving the Fire Department under legislative issues that, on the next portion of it. So I don't see anything else that needs to come before the Board of County Commissioners for Fire District Number One. At this time, I'm going to adjourn that meeting, call back to order the governing body of Board of County Commissioners. And Madam Clerk, next item.
Legislative issues.
All right, Tanya. And we've got Jason Watkins in the audience, our lobbyist. We have two different legislative agendas that we're going to talk about today. We're going to have one that is our legislative issue and one that's a joint legislative issue between Sedgwick County, the City of Wichita, the Chamber of Commerce, Reeve, Greater Wichita Partnership. So we'll start with which one today.
All right. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. We will start with the Sedgwick County Legislative Platform. And thank you for the introduction. You stole my intro. So, okay, as we get started, so today is December 7. And just wanted to recall that we started this discussion back in September of 20, excuse me, September 27. So we have been discussing the legislative platform for a couple of months now and have been taking your edits and some of your votes to modify the platform. And so today we are hoping for adoption and approval of the Sedgwick County Legislative Platform. So Nicole just handed out the redline version and the clean version, and so I will refer to the clean version if I can. At last meeting, we discussed changing the two first items that were on there and perhaps making the header of that priorities. And so you'll see that the first two items now are listed under priorities. And so if I can, I'd like to read off the first one. And Commissioner Meitzner did point out a change late yesterday, and so I've made that change. And I'll read that off to you. "Support for Regionalized State Mental Health Facility in South Central Kansas. Sedgwick County requests a regional state facility with a bed capacity of at least 50." And Commissioner Meitzner did point out that there have been some conversations in Topeka with the Mental Health Committee, Mental Health Beds Committee, and that they are looking at a bed capacity of at least 50 and an expansion of maybe even 100 beds. So I think, and as he points out, and that's duly noted, that we should make that read as of at least 50. So if you'll see that, I've made that change since yesterday with the copy that I sent out to you in email.
Should it say at least 50 or should we actually state with the possibility of expanding to 100? Is that's what the report came out?
I think that's up to you. I think we want to say at least 50. I think if we say 100, I think that, that also ties us down. So I guess it would be my, it would be my recommendation to say, to say at least 50, but I'll leave that up to the commission.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Yeah, Chairman, thank you. And I believe Representative, who's the chair of that committee?
McGinn. Senator McGinn.
Senator McGinn.
Landwear is the one recommended.
They've all, I think they've, and Jason can correct me, but they've been talking about potential, what's, what's the right number? And I think our local group have been on record saying at least 50, 50 for sure. If they want to expand or build it for expansion to 7,500, I think we keep it simple like this. Would you agree? Yeah. Okay.
Okay. I'm fine with that. I just want, the report came out that said with the ability to expand to 100, so I didn't know if we needed to address that or not.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
If we can get by with at least 50 and cover it with later on. Jason does a great job for us and he'll take care of that in Topeka, right? All right. Okay.
Okay. Second item that I changed from last meeting is the WSU KU Health Science Center. And so that reads, "Support Funding for the WSU KU Health Science Center, Supporting Workforce Needs and Creating a Pipeline That Strengthens and Supports Healthcare and Mental Health Initiatives." I did reach out to Andy Schlapp on this language and he didn't have any concerns about it.
Hey, but last night when we were at G W P, they've got a new name for it. It's now called the Biomedical Center, I believe. So make sure we get the correct name for this because they, Dr. Mumma and the two chancellors from KU made it a point that this is now the official name. So make sure we have the official name in here. And then this is not the official name that you've got in the legislative agenda right now.
Okay.
So as long as we can adopt it with the knowledge that you'll adjust it to the official name, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Any questions on that item? Okay. What else you have?
Moving to the second page then, under Corrections, and this was a change that was recommended at the last meeting. Under number one, "Support the Recommendations of the Community Task Force to Review Youth Correction System Standards and Communications Address to the Kansas Legislature, emphasizing legislative and State of Kansas Department recommendations."
Okay. Questions on that item? I don't see any. Thank you for the work on that.
Okay. And then just a minor edit on number two there, you'll see highlighted, and that's under Senate Bill 367. I just wanted to make the change that it was House Bill 2200, and that was in session 2021 and 2022. So I added that, that year in there.
Okay. Any questions on that? What else do you have on our legislative?
Okay. So that is it for the Sedgwick County Legislative Platform. As you'll see, everything else under Appropriations and Policy. Of course, it still has, you know, the comp care, aging, broadband access, Developmental Disability Organization, Division of Finance, Fire District Number One, Human Resources, Public Works, and the suspended driver's license law. And that has not been changed since, you know, of course, the discussions that we've been having ongoing since September.
Okay. Jason, do you have any issues with our legislative agenda? And can you advocate, you know enough, have we given you enough background that you can advocate for each of these items?
Yes, sir. Jason Watkins, Watkins Public Strategies. I'm your lobbyist. Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think the only thing on your agenda that I've identified that we are going to need to dial down more on is the Fire District. And I have no concerns with it. There's just a lot that we're going to have to define. How many people? When is that election? Are they staffed? So that's probably something that I need to work with staff and maybe Commissioner Howell on, because I know, I think that was your agenda item, right? And, and as I've said before, we want to try to get legislation, I should know how to say the word since I work on it every day, legislation. We need to get legislation written before the session starts. You know, we had an experience last year on a bill that we introduced and nobody had a problem with the bill. We just didn't get it passed because it got introduced so late in the process, we ran out of time. So on the Fire District issue, we need to get to work on that really quick because, again, there's a lot of things that are going to need to be defined in, in, in that bill.
Okay. Commissioner Meitzner, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ironic that you bring that up because that's why my light was on. On that item, I struggle with it respectfully because we've just appointed or just approved a, a Fire District Advisory Board. We went through some good energy and good effort to have community-wide, county-wide buy-in on a board, on an advisory board. And my gut kind of says, can we let that advisory board look at everything for a year? And now that you've added that timeframe of trying to organize something, I would really like to hear what the advisory board reports back to us quarterly or halfway through it, instead of jumping right from an advisory board right into an independently elected Fire Board. So just out of respect to what we've just done, I'd like, I, I would like to take that out and allow the advisory board to really do a deep dive into this and report back to us.
Thank you. And I concur with your statements. I have been concerned with this item in the past. And honestly, I was debating on whether or not to vote no on the entire agenda because that one item is in here. So I am concerned that that is one of the items that we would have our lobbyists expend a lot of time and effort on, that we need to find out exactly what's going to happen with this advisory council first. with this advisory council first, and maybe next year we could resurrect this item. So I would be in favor of removing it. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. You know, I, I've watched a lot of bills that worked their way through the legislature, and many times, it takes a number of years for something to actually move forward. This is a fairly big piece of legislation, and I think if we start working on this now, I wouldn't, I would not necessarily expect it would pass in 2022. But if you don't start working on this now, I think the chance of it passing in 2023 is also diminished. And so I think that by keeping this on the agenda, so there's an item of discussion, I can work on the bill, staff can work on the bill, I can work with legislators to help draft up something. It doesn't even mean that the county would necessarily support a bill draft, depends on what's in the bill. But I think as a overarching idea, you know, the idea is that the Board of County Commissioners is not the best governing body to manage this Fire District. I think that's my, my premise, my starting point is that statement. And so I recognize the fact that the Fire District itself is the one that brought this item forward as an idea, that they think there would be a better representation if this was an elected fire board that's separate from the Board of County Commissioners. I think they are right. So by leaving this on here, doesn't mean it's going to pass in 2022. It means I can get started. And I think this is comprehen, it's going to be comprehensive enough. It's going to take a number of years for this to go forward, if it does at all. If we fail in this effort, I anticipate the BOCC will then have the opportunity to vote to create a Board of Trustees, which is similar to a governing board, but I, a elected fire board. I would rather not start with going in that direction immediately because we fail on this one. To me, this is a better solution, but we don't know whether it's going to pass or not if we don't try. So if we're not going to do this, then I'm going to be moving forward to a Board of Trustees. I don't think that's where we should start. So I would, I would respectfully ask to leave this on here. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments on the legislative agenda? Again, there are some critical items in this agenda that we need to really work. And we don't have a definition of what all, that we're going to ask our lobbyists to do on Fire District Number One. So I move that we approve the 2023 Sedgwick County Legislative Platform with the exception of Fire District One.
One second.
We have a motion of a second, any discussion? Commissioner Howell?
You know, I, I don't think anybody gets everything they want on a legislative platform. This is one of those things where I think you take these things one by one, and there should be a separate motion to deal with this issue of the Fire District, let that be its own vote. And then you adopt the overall document. To do it the way we're doing it right now, I disagree with that because now I'm compelled to vote no. And I don't think it's where we want to be. So with all due respect, Mr. Chairman, I'd rather make a substitute motion, I would actually respectfully ask you to change your motion to deal with the one issue so that I can vote the way I'd like to vote on that, and that way I may be able to adopt the entire document, knowing that I did my, my part on that one issue. But as it currently is, as the motion's currently stated, I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Commissioner Meitzner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a substitute motion that we, that we eliminate Fire District One, Item One, from this document.
A second, Ted. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
No.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Hey, that leaves the rest of the legislative platform. I move that we approve the legislative platform in entirety, and we've already removed Fire District Number One. We have a motion of a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. And next, we got Tanya still up there. There is a joint legislative agenda that has been put together by Sedgwick County, City of Wichita, the Chamber, Greater Wichita Partnership, and REEP. One item on this is the bullet that says, "Legislation to Address Municipal Water Supply or Regulatory Uncertainty." My district is primarily rural, and I was having some questions about that, that I needed answered before that I could say that I supported this. I did talk to the REEP lobbyist, and I also talked to the Farm Bureau. And the REEP lobbyist was adamant that it stay in, but I still needed to find out the impact on, on the farmers. After speaking with the Farm Bureau, they are okay with the wording, "Legislation to Address Municipal Water Supply or Regulatory Uncertainty." Depending on, as we move forward through the session, because this is pretty general, as we move forward through the session, there may be bills that are submitted on water that could have an adverse effect on the farm community. So we just need Jason and his, and Jessica to keep their eye on that and make sure that anything that happens, we do want to support the City of Wichita because we know that they have issues that they have to provide water. But we also have to make sure that we protect our farm area. So all I'm asking, I'm going to make a motion to approve this in its entirety, but just have Jason and Jessica keep an eye on it and make sure if there's something that comes up, you coordinate with the Farm Bureau to make sure that it is something that doesn't harm our rural community. So are there any questions on the, on the joint legislative agenda? We've talked about it a number of times, and we've all had an opportunity to review it. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Commissioner Chairman. So as I, thank you, Mr. Chairman, so as I look at this, some of these are duplicates on our previous platform we just passed, and that I don't have any problem with those. Some of these are addition, additional, and I'm not sure that they are necessarily priorities for Sedgwick County, but as this quintuple agreement, I guess we're going to support the priorities of some of these other groups. That's right, that's why it's on here. As I've said before, I like, I like to have crisp directives. And when you say policies that enable employment, and it goes on, policies that support legislative regulatory changes, I have no idea what that even means. I don't know how you write that bill. And I'm concerned that this is not very well-defined. I don't know exactly what we're asking the legislature to do. In fact, I would say, for example, policies that support legislative and regulatory changes to foster high-quality, affordable, and safe childcare. I spitball, what does that actually mean? Are we talking about changing a ratio of how many adults, how many, how many children and adult can watch? Or are we trying to subsidize childcare? What are we trying to, what are we, what are we talking about here exactly?
Jason Watkins, again, Mr. Chairman. So what you said at the end is one of the things that's, that's being looked at. Kansas has a pretty low ratio in state law in terms of how many adults per child under a certain age. But I think there's a handful of things that the different entities are looking at in terms of childcare. Let me address the overall concern that, that you raised. Sedgwick County's legislative agenda is very specific in the items that it addresses. If you look at the Wichita Chambers, it's not. It's much more overarching. The Chamber, for example, wants that flexibility of not being terribly specific in what they have on their agenda. They're a different entity than the county. It makes sense for the county to be as specific as you are. And so I think that's why you see this agenda crafted with that type of language. The other thing that I will say, and I, I'll take the credit or the blame, depending on one's perspective, that joint agenda got to be very, very long, and it had a lot of words in it. The agenda items became paragraphs, and legislators aren't going to read that. That, that agenda turned into a page and a half for the joint agenda, and I'm the one that came in and just took a scalpel to it, so that it's much shorter. So a lobbyist sits down with the legislator, I'm going to take that agenda, and I'm going to go over those points, and I'm going to explain what all of that is. And, and the other lobbyists that are with the other organizations and that are participating, they're going to do the same thing. So that's why it's not as specific. I do, you know, I get your point, and I'm not even saying that I disagree. I just want to explain to you what happened with that, and that I'm the one that did it.
So to be clear, you are our lobbyist, and you're going to be working for our other platforms specifically. And on this platform, this is not your initiative. This is a joint initiative that, I guess, for the parts of this that line up with our platform, you'll work those. But for example, the, the other ones are not on this, not on our platform, but on this one. Are you going to spend time lobbying on behalf of Sedgwick County because it's on this platform?
No, we'll just say that we're supportive of it.
Okay. I'll just say, I'm proud of the fact that, and I'll, I'll take a little bit of credit here. I think, I'm proud of the fact that the Board of County Commissioners has, has done our best to be as objective and crisp on these initiatives as we possibly can. Every single year, for the last number of years, we've been successful. We've, we've had, we've passed legislation, and we stand with the governors, they sign the legislation that we sponsored or created. And I just, I just say, I think we've done a great, great job. No offense to the other organizations, but they can't say that. You know, the reason we are, I think, better in terms of passing legislation is because we've taken this objective, crisp approach to, to moving legislation forward. We know how to write the bill because we know exactly what we're asking for. I will reluctantly support this today. I don't know that these, let me use the words, I think some of these things are very squishy. I have no idea what they mean. I don't know what they're asking for. In fact, I think, at least on them with childcare, I think even the statement itself actually is conflicted in itself, in and of itself. Because when you lower the ratio of adults watching children, I'm not sure that that fosters high-quality, affordable, maybe it's more affordable, but I'm not sure it's as high-quality or as safe. So to me, the statement itself actually has conflicts with, built in within the statement. This is not, I had nothing to do with this platform coming to us this morning, and we did not actually have discussion between, discussion between commissioners. I know one commissioner sat on this board to help develop these things, but we didn't have any discussion about what was being crafted in the other meetings. And so I'll, again, I'll reluctantly support this because I want to support these, these organizations, but I don't think this is as well-done as it should be done, and I, I'm concerned that we're not being very crisp on what we're asking you to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. So my question, I guess, is related to the childcare issue. What, what goal is this trying to achieve? Like, why is this on here in the first place?
Yeah, thank you. The issue is the, the issue is a lack of affordable childcare and a lack of access to childcare, which gets back to workforce issues. You have people that are not in the workforce or cannot fully participate in the workforce because they either can't afford childcare or they, they can't find available childcare. So it's really an issue that the legislature started dealing with last year. One of the changes that was made, if you were a bank or you were a C corporation, you could either open a daycare center in your facility, or you could expend money to help with daycare, and you got a tax, you got a tax credit for that. Sole proprietors, LLCs, S corporations, they didn't get that tax credit, therefore, they couldn't participate in that for their employees. So that was a change that was sought by a lot of organizations last year. This is really just a continuation of that. We've got, we have to be able, we have to have childcare available and affordable so that people can fully participate in the workforce.
Does Spirit have a childcare center? Does anybody know that? I know that's a random question. I guess, for instance, when I think of this, if, if they, if a corporation was given incentives to build out a space, that's kind of what you're talking about.
Well, that, that was addressed last year with, with the tax credits being available to entities beyond C corporations and banks.
That passed?
It did pass.
Awesome. Okay, so would you take it down to the lower level of a business then? Is that something specific, though, I think to Commissioner Howell's point? Is, I mean, the bullet right after that is "Extension of the Heartland Flyer Amtrak Line Connection." I mean, that's super-specific. And I get it that this is an overarching thing, but we're specific to some and we're not specific to others. So I guess, I really just kind of want to reiterate his point, because I do agree that anytime we do something, it's easier to, I mean, these, I like to speak in fluffy language. I like to be overarching about a lot of things, but when it comes to passing things that are really substantial in terms of childcare for mothers who need that help, fathers who need that help, I just hope that something is really substantial that passes that is helpful.
So, yeah, I understand and appreciate that point. I think the childcare one is a, is a good example of a problem that's been identified. That's easy to do, right? It can be a little more challenging to identify a solution or a group of solutions. So one of the solutions identified by folks that have, have been talking about this access to childcare issue is that Kansas's ratios are some of the lowest in the country. Missouri, Oklahoma, Nebraska, they don't require as many adults per child, and children are not dying in daycares in those states. So I always appreciate the safety issue, and I think Commissioner Howell was alluding to that a little bit there. But that is a solution that's been identified. That, in part, is written that way because hopefully, as the session progresses and people continue to work on this, there are other solutions that, that will be identified that have not been identified yet. And so if you're just specific to, we're going to fix this because we're going to address the ratios, then when another solution is identified, you're not participating in that.
Well, like the child tax credit. The child tax credit at the federal level is going down, actually, next year. But transportation for parents who have to travel to drop their child off to then go to work, I mean, that adds up in a month. So adding incentives like that for individual parents, I mean, that's obviously just one idea, but I would love to follow that, even though, you know, I won't be sitting here. So thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And not to belabor the, the childcare issue, but I think, I think Jason's right on in that it's, needs to be holistically, whatever, whatever they can adjust, they can adjust and keep adjusting through this process, because my touch point is that serving on the board at, at WSU Tech, ironically, and of course, that's a college that's business and industry-driven to certify and certificate young adults mainly to, to get jobs. And, but ironically, this childcare issue comes up from the businesses, is a, is a, is an obstacle for their employment, as you referenced, and it also come, it also comes up with, with the staff at, at WSU Tech, just on simple things like they're taking an evening course, and, and so even WSU Tech struggles with the education part of that the childcare problem affects. And I think Sheena and, and our own staff have had to deal with childcare issues as a help. So, so I'm okay with, with supporting it and allowing the smart people like Jason and up in Topeka to continue to peel off things that help everybody overall. So that's just my touch point. Thank you for letting me say that.
Thank you. And again, we get a lot more done when we're working together, and that's why that there's a joint legislative platform. And the difference between the two is that, yes, ours is fairly specific, but the joint legislative platform, in many cases, is a little bit more general. One other thing is that it also says on here, KU biomedical campus, that may be the title of it.
I noticed that we had.
So I think that probably they're already ahead of us on having the right terms. But as Jason, who's our lobbyist, goes forward, and as we go up there, we're going to lobby for our areas, but if someone says, hey, do you support the water? It depends on what it is. So I, I think we're correct on keeping this general for the joint. Shows that we're good partners and that we will work with all of our partners to improve this entire area. Last night, we had the GWP meeting over at Exploration Place, and it absolutely showed what's happening in this community if we're all working together. And fantastic things are happening. Fantastic things can happen on our legislative agenda when we're working together. So that's why I support this legislative agenda. Any other comments on that? I see none. I move that we approve the joint legislative agenda for 2023.
Second.
We have a motion of a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. And again, thank you to Tanya, to Jason, Jessica, for all the work on getting us to this point. We've had a number of iterations on, on our legislative agenda.
We've had a number of iterations on our legislative agenda. There are a couple of things that are a little bit different as we move forward. Normally, we have a reception here locally for our legislators before they go up to Topeka. Things have changed a little bit, and it doesn't look like we'll have a reception here, but we're working with Jason to see if we can get the Country Club or something like that up in Topeka to have a dinner at some point here early and after January, when all the legislators are there. So I don't know if all the commissioners are aware that we're looking at something like that, that's a little bit different, but I wanted to bring that up. So again, thanks for all the work on this, appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioners, appreciate it.
All right. Madam Clerk, next item.
Committee reports.
Any commissioners have anything for committee reports today?
Other.
Any commissioners, Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Sheena, can I ask you a question, please? About a year ago, we started talking about parental leave, and I just haven't heard a whole lot since then, and so I was just wondering if we could take a look at that and what we're offering now, and compare it to other areas, and see what, if anything, we could update or change to make that better for our staff.
Okay. Just real quick, as a recap, we did bring that up in February, when we had our commission retreat. We haven't had any movement on it, passed then, but what we suggested at the time was to mirror something that the state was doing, so what we can do is get information put together and present it back to the commission.
That would be perfect, yeah. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Anything else further? Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick points. Our Kansas Department of Transportation Secretary Julie Lorenz has resigned, and she has a, they have a Zoom reception, or a personal reception, this Friday in her, thanking her, and she has been a fantastic secretary for our region, and has become personal friends with many of us. And I just want to extend my thanks and my well wishes for Julie to, whatever her future is, I don't know what it is, but if she's watching, no, she doesn't watch this stuff, I'm sure. But, and the other small thing that I'm, if I can just point out to us, on that pay thing we approved today, I don't know if it impacts the new commissioner that's coming in, but part of it says that effective the first, all newly-elected officials will be placed under the state pension plan. And if that was in effect when Commissioner Dennis, you wouldn't have been able to run. And I don't participate in the state plan either, so I don't know if the new commissioner is going to have an issue with that or not, but I hope not, and I hope it's not a point of dismay that it would have been for you, and would have been for me as well, for not. So two out of five of us don't participate in it today. So it's just one small thing that's among many that I struggle with. But in honor of the new commissioner, if the new commissioner is okay with it, that at least that's one of the obstacles that we don't need to worry about. So, thank you. That's the extent of my comments.
Thank you. And I'd like to echo Commissioner Meitzner's comments about Secretary Julie Lorenz. She has been fantastic for this region. North Junction's happened, extending, going west on, or east, rather, on Kellogg, it's happened because of what she's done. There's roadwork down in my district, going out by Clonmel area, that is a result of Julie Lorenz. She came to town, and she listened to us. She traveled around the state and listened to the public, and she's been a fantastic Secretary of Transportation. What worries me just as much losing her are some of the senior staff are also retiring at the same time. And that's going to impact us, I think, in the future, also because a lot of the corporate knowledge is walking out the door. So it makes it even more imperative that our Transportation Coalition continue its work in the future to make sure that these projects are moving forward. It's imperative that WAMPO continues to do what they can do. And I appreciate the fact that, again, because we've got a joint legislative agenda, we also have the Transportation Coalition and other groups that are working together to make sure that these major projects are happening here in this region. So I want to wish her well, wish her senior staff well, that is retiring, and I sure hope that our governor finds someone as qualified as Julie Lorenz was to replace her. Thank you very much. Any other things on other? I don't see anything at this time. We do not have a reason for an executive session today. Does anything else need to come before the board? Seeing nothing, we adjourn. And don't forget, Commissioners, I need your signatures before you leave the room.